All right, we're going to get things rolling. We are live right now, and so I'm going to call it to order this April 22, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Area School Board. If everyone will rise with me to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to do the, let's start with the roll call. We have one of our directors remote right now, and I don't know if she can see us from a camera, a certain camera, or Amber, let's start, let's start with you, Amber.
Okay, hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me join virtually. Amber Cameron.
Brett Nicholson.
Paul Carbone.
I'm Matt Swanson.
Michael Baumann.
Carly Anderson.
Brian Thompson.
All right. Any additions or modifications to the agenda requested? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as drafted.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion to approve the agenda as drafted by Director.
Second.
Anderson, seconded by Director Nicholson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is approved. We'll jump into the good news.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, all. Welcome to the school board meeting for April 22. As many of you are aware, we have students of the month here in Lakeville Area Schools, and we're excited to announce that April's students are Cone Johnson, fifth grade Oak Hills Elementary, and Naomi Wandwassen from Lakeview Elementary, and Edith Long from Century Middle School. So congratulations to those students for being student of the month for Lakeville Area Schools. I got to tell you, it's a lot of fun to go to the classrooms and do those awards. As well, we have staff of the month, and we're excited to announce that April's staff are Evan Pearson, a science teacher at Lakeville North High School, and Lisa Thirk, a kindergarten teacher at Eastview Elementary. So congratulations to both of them. Opening doors, college and career readiness in Lakeville Area Schools. What does life after high school look like for Lakeville students? In our new mini documentary, we follow Ava, a Lakeville North High School senior pursuing a career in the trades, and Josh, a Lakeville South High School junior preparing for college. Ava and Josh, along with their teachers and counselors, provide insight into how Lakeville Area Schools help them discover their passions and prepare for their individual college and career journeys. You can learn more and watch the mini documentary at ISD194.org/news. Student Nutrition Appreciation Week. Next week, April 28 through May 2, we're celebrating Student Nutrition Appreciation Week in Lakeville Area Schools. We want to take a moment and say thank you to the incredible student nutrition team members. We work tirelessly, or who work tirelessly each day to ensure that our students have access to healthy, balanced meals and are prepared to learn. Their dedication and care make a meaningful difference in the lives of our students and the success of all our schools. And I think all board members made a commitment to go serve lunch somewhere with, no, just kidding. Maybe not. You can join me, I'll be out there. Two Lakeville Area students qualify for Team USA. Two Century Middle School students, Adelaide Mlodzik and Sydney Mlodzik, recently qualified for their second year as World Martial Arts Committee Team USA members. The two traveled to Cincinnati, Ohio on March 29 to compete in their respective age and belt level divisions at the national qualifier tournament. Sydney and Adelaide will travel to Hull, England in September to compete at the World Martial Arts Games Elite World Championships. So congratulations to those two. Haya! Lakeville students earned national honors in 2025 Scholastic Art Awards. Two high school juniors have earned national recognition at the 2025 Scholastic Art Awards. Annika Swenson, a junior at Lakeville North High School, received a gold medal for her film photograph Moment in Time. Alice Yee, a junior at Lakeville South High School, earned a silver medal for her acrylic painting Breath of Night. Congratulations to these talented artists. Our Lakeville Winter Guard shines at finals. The Lakeville Winter Guard teams wrapped up their 2025 season on a high note, capturing championship titles at the North Star Circuit Finals. The combined Lakeville Middle School team earned first place in the Scholastic Regional A Division with their spirited performance of Snow Day. The combined Lakeville High School team received first place in the Scholastic A Division with their inspiring show titled Every Golden Step. Individual accolades are also awarded. Kenwood Trail Middle School student Elaine Nielsen secured third place in the solo competition, while Lakeville South High School students Olivia Maki and Nika Wolf took first place in the duet category. And you can read more about the amazing things happening in our district at ISD194.org/news. And let's give a round of applause to our Winter Guard. Mr. Chair, there's more. Okay, I want to introduce Lakeville South High School chemistry teacher, Mr. Jason Just, and it's my pleasure to welcome a few special guests who are joining us today for this good news. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Jason Just, chemistry teacher, Lakeville South, along with four of his outstanding students, Alice Yee, Lillian Launzbach, Daniel Gonzalez, and Carter Wendorf. Come on up. They're here this evening to share some of the remarkable opportunities available through the chemistry program at Lakeville South, including a highlight of the course, the annual science show. So I'm excited for you to hear from them, and I hope everybody will pay attention. Thank you.
Hey, guys, so glad to be able to speak here to speak here today to you guys. My name is Carter Wendorf, and I'm here today with current juniors and seniors at Lakeville South High School that are enrolled in College Now AP Chemistry. On February 28, 2025, we held our annual science show. You can see some highlights on the video screen around you. This year, our theme was Bat Mul Beal, and we demonstrated the amazing world of science for all students from Lakeville South to see. Later in the day, we held shows that Cherryview Elementary third graders were able to view, and in the evening performed for our community. College Now AP Chemistry is a concurrent enrollment class with the Minnesota State University system. What that means is that we take a college-level chemistry class taught in our high school by a high school teacher, Mr. Just, granting us college credit on a transcript that we can transfer to our chosen post-secondary institution.
Hi, my name is Lily Launzbach, and I love concurrent enrollment chemistry because it challenges me in an engaging and fun way. Like many students, I turn towards challenging classes because I know I will be surrounded by others who have the same passion for learning that I do. And a little bit of college credit never hurts. College Now AP Chemistry has an added bonus for me because, like most of my AP classes, I don't have to take an exam to determine my college credit at the end of the year, but it is instead already guaranteed thanks through our partnership with Minnesota State College and University System. The science show was a super engaging and fun learning experience because not only was I able to teach others about my demonstration, but I also learned from my peers about 36 different science disciplinary core values and ideas, and it helped create such a big depth of knowledge that I was able to create my own way of learning, teaching, and sharing chemistry with others. Kaylee will now flip through slides of some of our favorite photo memories as we show you one of our own demonstrations.
Good evening to all the honorable members of our Lakeville School Board. I am Danny Gonzalez, and here with Alice Yee. We were emcees for this year's science show, and this was all done through our class course of College Now AP Chemistry.
Today, we're going to be demonstrating a simple experiment to do with density, or mass divided by volume. Now, one thing that's emphasized in our chemistry course is how chemistry can be applied to everyday life. For example, if you put a styrofoam cup in water, it will float because the styrofoam is less dense than water. But if you put a porcelain cup in water, well, it will definitely sink. Similarly, oil floats in water because the oil is less dense than water, as well as helium in air because of their relative densities. Now, we're going to do a simple demonstration. Guess which of these pop cans you think is going to float and which ones will sink? Feel free to put your thumbs up if you think they'll float, and your thumbs down if you think they'll sink. Let's start with Coke. What do you think?
They're all full.
No, they're all full. They're all full.
I'm too thirsty.
Go ahead.
Wait, wait, it's going to sink?
Yeah. It looks like the Coke sunk. Next, let's see what Diet Coke is going to do. We'll find out. It floats. And what about Sprite?
Go down, go down, go down.
It sinks. And last but not least, we have Diet Pepsi. It also floated. So why did only the Diet Coke and the Diet Pepsi float, but the others did not? The answer is, again, density. The answer is because the Diet Coke and Diet Pepsi have a sweetener called aspartame, but only 0.2 grams, whilst the regular pops have 39 grams of sugar. Because, as you can see on the screen above, mass is directly proportional to density that makes the Diet Pops lighter and less dense than the 1 grams per milliliter of water, whilst the regular pops are more dense, leading them to sink. Thank you for watching our demonstration.
I kind of thought there might be some fire and smoke.
We kept that on the pictures today. Thank you. My name is Jason Just. I'm a 25-year Lakeville resident and have, I'm a parent of two graduates from Lakeville Schools. And I get to teach these amazing teens, so I have a wonderful life, and I'm glad to be here tonight. This concurrent course is a strategic investment that gives us some significant return. Students earn nine semester university credits in chemistry just by being in this class, not taking a test, but because it's concurrent enrollment. This directly impacts our students' college credentials and future employability. Students transfer these credits to the post-secondary institution of their choosing. We have a number of examples that Kaylee thinks, let's give a round of applause to Kaylee. She's done our clicker today. Kaylee's put up on the screen for you. These are just a few examples of places that this has transferred in the last 10 years that we've had this course. This provides our students with a significant advantage in their post-secondary landscape. We brought a gift for you today. One of our community sponsors for the science show is the American Chemical Society, and they want to provide you with a pocket-sized periodic table. You can fold it, it'll fit right in your wallet, and yes, we'd like you to be a card-carrying member of our chemistry club. And we really appreciate you guys sponsoring our chemistry piece that we've done here tonight. We provide our students with the tools and the credentials to become the doctors that are going to cure pancreatic cancer. These guys are going to be the pharmacists that research and provide us with the drugs that are going to reverse Alzheimer's disease. These are going to be the kids that are going to be the engineers that make our iPhone batteries last 10 days, not 10 hours. We want this success for them because that's success for us. And their well-being is the well-being of Lakeville. Thank you very much. Questions?
Yeah, so from my understanding, in high school, there are three years worth of some sort of science courses that you have to, classes you have to take. You've got, I think it's basic science, you've got biology, and then chemistry, and then I believe in fourth, in your senior year, you could take like physics or something of that nature. So, in my understanding, then, that as a junior, high school students can take this concurrent chemistry class in lieu of the chemistry, the standard chemistry class? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're actually undergoing a little bit of a curriculum change right now because the state implemented some new science standards. And so freshman year from now on will always be earth science course all year. Sophomore year will be biology. And then junior year, students have the choice between either chemistry or physics to fill out their six semesters that are required. Many students end up taking chemistry their junior year, and this concurrent course is one of the things that they could take. And then they have an additional semester they could take to earn more college credits if they'd like to.
So then a high school student can choose between regular chemistry, AP chemistry, or this concurrent course option?
I mean, this is the AP chemistry curriculum. It just happens to be partnered with the Minnesota State College and University System for this course.
And then you don't have to take an exam at the end of the year. Like, if you get a B, you get a C, you get full credit for the class that you take.
Yeah, it goes on your transcript, just like you get a transcript from Bethel University, you get a transcript from Minskew, and then you can take that and transfer it to.
Great, fantastic.
And obviously, if you go to a state university, you don't transfer it because it's already on your transcript.
And then it meets, it will then meet the science requirement for any collegiate institution you end up going. So, awesome.
Are these all juniors?
Danny's our senior. Let's give him a round of applause. He's going to graduate soon.
And you mentioned nine credits. Is that just for one year, or is that over the course if they take every one of the courses?
So, the course is three semesters total, and the, the courses that it mirrors in the Minnesota State system are Chem 231 and 231L, which is three credits for the lecture, one for the lab, and then Chem 232 and Chem 232L, which is three credits for the lecture, two for the lab. And so if you complete those semesters, you end up with nine, nine credits.
That's great. Director Anderson?
I just want to say I love to see the enthusiasm for learning. This is a beautiful thing to see in our district, and I just, obviously, that starts with you as a teacher, and just love to see what the students are doing. So thank you for coming and presenting and offering this course to our students.
This is the main thing. We love it. Oh, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to jump in and just say thanks for the presentation. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight to see it. But my family and I did attend the show, and my kids loved the elephant toothpaste experiment. So that inspired us to go to the pharmacy the next day and buy a bunch of materials to try to replicate some of them in our own home. So thanks for inspiring the next, you know, group of high schoolers who will come up eventually and hopefully take this course.
And we left your, we left your card, your periodic table card with Kim over here, so she'll have it for you when you get back.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask what the elephant toothpaste experiment is? I'm curious.
Did you, you guys want to explain? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so elephant toothpaste, it's almost like, if you've ever seen like Diet Coke and Mentos, it's like a giant explosion, it like explodes everywhere. It's really fun. Yeah.
She'll find some pictures here in a second. Here it is, right here.
Oh, wow.
So it's a, it's a chemical reaction of the decomposition of hydrogen peroxide, and there's obviously a lot of soap involved. And when hydrogen peroxide decomposes, it forms a lot of oxygen gas, which fills the soap bubbles, and that's the suds that you see. That's enough to be toothpaste for an elephant.
I want to add one other thing. The conference that I'm at is on broader impacts for research and society. And so something else I appreciate that you're doing is students are learning both the science, of course, but you're also learning how to translate that so that, you know, lay or public can understand. And I think that's such a valuable skill. And so I think you're putting a lot together here, helping our students leave Lakeville School with some, some strong skills. So thank you for that.
Director Anderson?
Is this a course offered at North as well, or do North students come to South, or North students can't do this?
North students can travel to South to take the course. Yeah.
Director Thompson?
Two questions. Who teaches this course? Do we bring in teachers, or is it you who actually teaches? Like, so you're, you're the collegiate require or licensed instructor?
Yeah, so, I mean, we use the credentials a number of times in here, and that's what it takes. And so you have to have some credits beyond a master's degree to do that in the, in the, in the content area, and that happens to be in chemistry, of course, for this course.
Got it, got it. And then the second question is like, how does it show up on a transcript? Does it show like, because when you said we have a partnership through various state universities, does it show, like, is it Normandale? Is it the University of Minnesota? Or like, what does that look like on a transcript?
So our, our particular Minskew institution is Southwest Minnesota State, and so they have a username and password into a Minnesota STAR ID, if you know what that is. And then they can pull their transcript from Southwest Minnesota State, and it will show the courses, Chemistry 232, Chemistry 232L, and it will list their grade and their credits for each course. Good question.
Director Thompson?
I'm fascinated by this because I think it's a great opportunity to give our high school students a leg up, and if they choose to go down this path, but if they go, go to a university, do we offer more classes like this, like in English or in math, or is, is science, is chemistry the only thing that we offer that's concurrent?
Yeah, so we offer one other class right now that has concurrent enrollment in pre-calculus at Lakeville South. And I'd love to go up for a cup of coffee with any of you and discuss how we could make that happen for more students, because this really helps the main thing. And a lot of them want this leg up, like you said, moving forward.
Is this similar to like college in the schools, that programming?
Exactly. Yes, yes. It just doesn't have that name. It's, but it's, it is college in the schools.
Well, thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. It's amazing. What's the, what's the TV show that has, or the late night show that has the Will It Float segment?
Mr. Wilson.
All right. Good luck following that one. It's public comment time. So the time where we open up the floor for public comments, the public to address the board with any comments or concerns. In order to participate in public comment, you have to sign up on the district website by Monday at noon on the day prior to the board meeting. There is no board response during public comment session. And public comments framed as complaints and or concerns about students and our staff are not appropriate in a public forum due to the data privacy laws, and these comments should be addressed to the administration outside of a public meeting. Likewise, complaints about school board members should be privately directed to the board chair and/or the superintendent. We do not take any formal action on topic, on a topic presented during public comment, but as necessary, the administration will follow up with the appropriate personnel on any concerns that need to be individually addressed. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Our current timekeeper is not here today, so we can, we only have two people for public comments, so I'm not too worried. If it goes really long, I'll cut you off. But yeah, I'll ask you to monitor that. Yeah, and then please try to keep audience noise down to a minimum so everyone can hear and speak uninterrupted. I'm going to start with Sheri Mitchell.
Good evening, board, and public parents and family, and all supporters that are here for the arts. My name is Sheri Mitchell, and I am a elementary art teacher at Lakeview Elementary, and I have the privilege of serving 645 students in my building. And I'm here tonight to speak about bringing awareness to the operating levy that will be either passed or sent out to the community to vote in November. And the operating levy will impact my department. It will impact elementary band and technology. And if the operating levy does not pass, the elementary department will be gone, similarly to in 2008 when it was disbanded. And there's a lot of, like, lack of awareness from our public and many of our educators about what this means. And one of the things that it does mean is that the standards for art don't disappear. They just get placed onto the plates of our classroom teachers, similarly to back in 2008. of our classroom teachers, similarly to back in 2008. And my team serves, there's eight of us. We serve nine elementary schools. Two of us travel to the high school and serve in the mornings there. And our department, we serve thousands of kids. We create spaces for kids to feel like they belong, to be expressive. And when I say all, we serve all programs and kids. And we help them find their success in whatever that looks like or feels like. And so I just ask that you guys support our program. We do, like what we start in elementary is a foundation for middle and high school. We are sending out kids into public spaces and jobs where our skills that we teach them do impact their life in a positive way. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jamie Moller?
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Jamie Moller. I'm the art teacher at Cherryview Elementary. And I'm here today because the levy that supports the arts is about to run out. And I wanted to just give you a glimpse into the elementary art room. When I became an art teacher, the most common thing that I heard and still hear is, oh, you're an art teacher? You must love getting to paint all day. And well, let me tell you, if you haven't been in an elementary art classroom, we do a lot more than just paint. In our classroom, we respect each other. We experiment with materials. We find our voice. We learn from our mistakes. We reflect on our work and persevere. We have opinions and appreciate beauty. We learn real world life skills. We envision solutions and value aesthetics. We see another point of view. The art room is more than a place for painting and drawing. It's a space where young students can begin shaping the core of their character. I polled the fifth grade students in preparation for this meeting, and 70% of them said that art is calming. In a world where data runs their lives, they get to turn that data off for 50 minutes once a week and let their minds loose. It's like recess for their brain. The students in our art classes aren't just painting. In that same survey, students mentioned how art helps them when they're stressed. It builds their confidence. One student even mentioned how it helped their handwriting to get better. When asked, what does art mean to you? A student responded, I can be creative without doing it someone else's way. Another student responded, art means I can express my feelings. I'm able to do my best, and no one will make fun of me for it. When asked, how does art help you in other classes or in life? One responded, I can see the world in a more fun and colorful way. Another said that since she starts her day with art right away in the morning, she's more relaxed and happy for the rest of that day. The students in our art classes aren't just painting. The art room is a safe space. We have to be brave in the art room. We have to have courage, just like having the courage to speak in front of an audience or to play in a stadium with thousands of people. Our young artists have to be brave to start on a blank canvas. They have to learn to trust themselves in a way no other subject does. The students in our classes aren't just painting. For 50 minutes once a week, these students learn that being perfect is not what's important. Being genuine is. Come and see what bravery these artists have. Our Cherryview Fine Arts Night is Thursday, May 8, starting at 5:00 PM. And we would love for you to come and see what art means to our students. Thank you for your time.
All right, that concludes public comment. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Anything anyone wants to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? Director Thompson?
Yes, I'm looking at the policy 208 in the consent agenda. I believe there might be two. Hang on, I got to get to it. There might be two examples. Maybe I'm mistaken. Hang on a second. Yes, okay. So there are two policy 208 attachments. And just want to make sure that we're on the same page of which one we are doing. And so I think there is one on page 181. And then there is another one on page 182. I'm sorry, 182. Do you guys see that? So the 182 one has, I think the most current, is the most current because it has Board of Education crossed out, and it's got school board listed. But then I believe that the copy, or the copy that we want to pass in adopting and review of the policy, section four, letter A, that is incorrect because I think that is coming from the one that was above. And so let me just make sure I have this correct. The policy of 208, when we are approving policies on page, that starts on page 179 in the agenda, is, has the right content because we're going to have it displayed during subsequent meeting after public input was twice offered. Does that make sense?
Let's just pull this, and then we'll approve the consent agenda and then discuss this.
Yeah, let me, yeah, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll come right back to it. Well, yeah.
Yeah, let's pull it. Because I think we'll want to make some changes.
We're pulling F and then sub numero three, other consent agenda. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
All right. With that removed, I would move to approve the consent agenda as drafted with the exception of the removal of 4F sub numero three. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor of proving the consent agenda with that exception, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, it is approved. All right, let's go back to 208.
Yeah, thank you for that. All right, so then on page 180 in the agenda, there is a section for adoption of policy, letter B. And so it has the right content where the final action taken to adopt the proposed policy shall be approved by the vote at a subsequent meeting after initial input was twice offered. And that's the language that we wanted to adopt. The, correct?
I thought it was removing the subsequent.
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to remove that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah.
So then on page 182. School board meetings. So on page 182, I'm sorry, page 183, it says, the final action taken to adopt the proposed policy shall be approved by a simple majority vote of the school board at a meeting after public input was twice offered. That's the correct one.
Correct.
Okay. And so then we are adopting the version that starts on page 182.
Yeah, the red line version?
Yeah, okay. Sorry, again, for those who are looking at this 300-page document, and the, there's a, the policy 208 also started on 179. So just want to make sure there's clarity for folks. That's all.
I think we do have to clean up and put our header back on it.
Correct.
Because of red line version.
Yep, and I think, and they can do that. I don't think we need to.
But I think the meat of it is fine.
Correct, yep.
Can I just add to, Brian, to add to your clarification that people are looking on this at Board Book? It is the second linked item. They're both labeled F.III or F.3, but it's the second one.
Correct, thank you.
Yep, okay.
So I make a motion to adopt this policy.
All right, the red line version?
The red line version.
All right.
I second it.
Seconded, motions made by Director Thompson, seconded by Director Cameron. All those in favor of approval of the revision or revised policy 208, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, it is adopted. All right, we'll move on to reports and discussions with more policy discussion. Director Thompson, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll kick it off on 714. And then I will defer to Mr. Holmgren on the next two, which is 725 and 704. 714 is the school fund balance. And so this was brought up. What you will see in Board Book, again, starting on page 190, you'll see a lot of red line. So what we did is we compared the current Lakeville fund balance policy to the Minnesota School Board Association model policy. And so a lot of the content was adjusted. Nothing new, nothing majorly new was added. And so we wanted to bring this forward to the group. 714 is not the general fund specific. This is a model update that captures all of the various fund balances. So anyone who looks at this particular policy will see the difference between what an assigned fund is, a committed fund, enabling legislation and fund balance. And so that was part of the updates that the Minnesota School Board Association recommended. And so where, so I would recommend adopting that section specifically. Where we added additional content was, is on page 193, which is the minimum fund balance. And so this is where we can have a discussion around what the percentages ought to be. The minimum fund balance has three core sections, subsections within it. The first section states, the school district will strive to have an unassigned general fund balance of X percent. The second section says that when the year-end unassigned general fund balance is projected to decrease below a certain number, then the district school board will be informed about some sort of financial plan to course correct. And then the third section says, the unassigned general fund balance will always maintain a balance of X percent. So those are the kind of the three buckets of numbers that we have some flexibility with. We liked this approach because it has a number one number that says, here's what we want to strive to have. We've got, so it provides a little bit of a trigger where if the fund balance gets below, oh, no, we're at a certain, another level, a trigger gets activated. And then the third sentence or section wants us to maintain that number no matter what. And so I am very biased to this because I think a couple of years ago, we ran into a scenario where our unassigned fund balance was very unfavorable and roughly $211,000. So the proposal in this section of this policy, minimum fund balance within those three sections, is that the school district will strive to have an unassigned general fund balance of 10%. And that 10% is roughly $20 million. It's about 10% of our annual expenditures. That 10% number is also equating to about three months' worth of our expenditures. And so we are not trying to save six months' worth or a year's worth. 10% on average allows us to maintain operations for about three months. Section two, if it goes below 7.5%, that's kind of the trigger. So there is some, so there's some flexibility. That 7.5% gets you down to about $15 million. A trigger would be activated, for sure. And then section three says, we will always have a balance, no matter what, of at least 5%, which puts us at about $10 million. So those are the three big hot items in this particular policy. A policy here for thoughts and feedback from the group.
Director Nicholson?
I like the idea of a trigger. I like having a goal to go after. So holding that 10% makes a lot of sense. Three months' operating expense, especially given the current situation with the state budget deficit. We don't know what they're going to do, if they're going to cut funding to schools or anything else. It is good to have a balance. So fundamentally, I'm in alignment with kind of where you're at. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Director Anderson?
Go ahead, Amber.
Sorry, I don't know if you can see me. I'm just going to add to Brian's comments quickly. When the policy committee met, we did look at a variety of school districts in the metro and what their fund balance is at. And 10% goal is definitely like in the range of the schools. Some are lower, some are higher. And so I think that's important to note here, that we looked at our peers for comparison and to be in alignment.
I was just going to say, I appreciate the flexibility in terms of having more of that goal and what we're striving for, something that would trigger, and then something that seems like the bottom. I mean, we obviously got much below 5% and that felt very uncomfortable. Is there anything to say what will happen if it drops below 5%?
Yeah, so there isn't anything. In letter C, it says, the unassigned general fund balance will maintain a balance of 5%. In letter B, where it says that if we are projected to decrease below 7.5, the superintendent shall develop a financial improvement plan that the school board will approve. Measures may include reduction expenditure, seek opportunities to increase revenue, if permitted by state law, request from voters, additional revenue, X, Y, Z. So is there like a hand slap? Or is there, I mean, not a hand slap, is there like a consequence if we go below 5%? There isn't. So whoever is going to be on the school board in future years, this is kind of the guiding principle, I guess, the guidelines that we want to strive to be in. Letter C, I'd be open to saying that the unassigned general fund balance will always maintain versus will maintain. But you never know. You might run into scenarios. I mean, that the difference between 10% and 5% is $10 million. So you would think we'd have plenty of flexibility. But if we get into a scenario where the year-end unassigned balance is at 7.5%, that only gives you a 2.5% delta between that and the 5% number. So and that 2.5 delta is only $5 million. I mean, when you've, when we run a $300 million operation, you know, a $5 million swing isn't, I mean, could be, could happen due to whatever the state passes, due to different scenarios. I don't know.
My only concern with the 7.5% is we're technically below that right now. You know, so we're in that trigger territory. Yeah, and I know that we're projecting, or the goal is to build that fund balance up. You know, 7.5% will be low us, but it's not right now.
Yep, I believe we're projected to be at about $13 million by the end of this school year. And so 7.5% would be roughly 15% is where we want to be. And so when we pass this.
Huh? 15 million?
15 million, yep. What did I say?
15%?
15%, yep. So when we pass this, I don't anticipate that we have to, you know, cut a bunch of expenditures to get to that number. But at least we know where we're at. And then we would look to the administration to provide guidance on what is the pathway towards that 7.5%. And then I believe the preliminary numbers that we were showed for the '26, '27 school year, we are projected of roughly, Bill, 15.9-ish million next, next year potentially. So then, yep, if so, for '26, '27, we could get there by the end of that school year.
Director Anderson.
So would that, and I do want to hear from actually Bill and our superintendent, but I guess like would that projection meet this policy requirement then? Or is it like, we're not at 7.5%? We must make cuts immediately kind of situation? But I do want to hear from.
Yep. The way I'm reading section B is when the year-end unassigned general fund balance is projected to decrease below 7.5. And so assuming we pass this, when the budget is proposed to us for the next school cycle, '25 and '26, we should be roughly at about 7.5, a percentage-ish. And so we are, we would be in, we would be in.
In territory.
Yeah, in that territory.
So be in compliance then?
We would be technically in compliance.
With the caveat, I don't mean to cut any board member off. With the caveat that the planning assumptions that we applied to that, that you are, the whole public has already seen that. And I think we had two of our teachers talk about the levy renewal scenario is accounted for in there. So the pathway to what we're discussing here goes through the realization of the planning assumptions that were provided in our estimate for fiscal year '26. The other thing is, this one, the projected unassigned fund balance, which is kind of what we're talking about here, but really the budget, will never creep up on this board or you fire me. Okay? It will never creep up on you or you fire me because we are iteratively going to report to you so that you see it. You've already seen FY '26. You can have this conversation, of course. But this has to be tracked and reported iteratively. And I, I'm committed to do that. I just want to make sure everybody understands that while this is a policy and there is a trigger, as long as I'm in this role in this administration, that policy will be abided by and then some.
Let me add one more thing. Hang on a second. We did add a section nine called review. The school board will conduct a quarterly business review of the sufficiency of the minimum unassigned general fund balance level. So there is a little bit of governance in there as well and Superintendent Bowman said that we can, he'll monitor that very well.
Director Carbon.
Yeah. Director Thompson, should the, should the bands be a little tighter for the trigger? And here's, here's my concern. I know we're talking like 2.5% or 5%, but the real money actually shrinks by about a third or 25%. So in a, in a heartbeat, we could be down 25 to 30%. And I think, and I appreciate Superintendent Bowman's attentiveness to this. But as a policy, maybe we should make the bands a little tighter so if things are going south, we can find out right away.
So instead of the 7.5% trigger for, now, now, keep in mind the 7.5 is not, the comments, the content in here doesn't say that we have to change it overnight. It says that a financial improvement plan will be presented to the board if the unassigned general fund balance at the end of the year is projected to be below 7.5. And so there may be, and so I think what I'm hearing from you is that, do you want to increase that to maybe 8.5% or 9% so that the trigger is higher? And while we want to always strive for 10%, but if we go below, I'm just making a number up, 8.5% is at? That gives you more of a window.
Right, we get warned, we get the warning sooner. So we can react to it.
Almost 7.5 million dollars in, just in case.
Director Nicholson.
First one's a point of clarification. You mentioned in here annual expenditure budget. When you say annual expenditure budget, are you talking about the general fund budget? That's what, so for all the other presentations, always says a general fund, which is that 209 million number, not looking at total money, which is closer to almost 300.
Correct, yeah, because the other funds are like the nutrition fund and.
Yep, I understand that. But again, for future boards and the way we've presented all the information up to this point, I just want to make sure that we're clear. And I don't know if we need to clarify that in here.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Might help. And then to your point, tightening the bands, or do you want to have more of a, say, 8.5% is more of a review? Like have the superintendent, director of finance come up? Hey, we're, you know, we hit the first threshold. Do we need to make adjustments? Do you want to put in like a, say, say like a tiered approach to it instead of saying, hey, we need a financial plan to remedy said situation at 7.5%, but at 8.5%, we want you to say, hey, we're looking at it. We've looked ahead. We believe we have the information necessary. We're in a good spot. Don't panic, we're okay.
We've got quarterly reviews baked into this as well.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm throwing it out as an option to address.
And I think we get to the same place in both situations. So I'm, I'm good either way. I mean, it's, yeah, I'm good either way.
Quarterly business review.
And you're kind of, I mean, you guys are working from the assumption that we're coming down from 10% as opposed to working up to it like we're doing now. But Superintendent Bowman, do you have a comment? Amber, you good?
Yep, I mean, I think we're more prescriptive than any other policy that we looked at, like peers. So I think, you know, I think within reason have these triggers and, but I think also maintaining enough flexibility in the moment is important too.
One thing I think there was a discussion from other policies from other districts was the, you know, we have under 5C, the unassigned general fund balance will maintain a balance of 5% of the annual expenditure budget, where there was, it can only decrease or go below 5% with board approval. Just another option to throw it out there. I mean, ideally, you don't go below it, but send you be in violation of the policy. But just another option to put in. But I do want to echo what Amber was saying earlier. With the Policy Committee, we talked to, talked about the 10% being the top. There are other districts that are above it. But in discussions with Mr. Holmgren, we thought we didn't, we don't need more than 10%, you know, as a healthy kind of safeguard, so.
And I think that 10% number will help with our credit rating, which allows us to have better rates with bonds and operating expenditures. I'm open to the letters, in letter C, where it says board approval if below 5%. But I think by then, like, we would know. When you, or like if you're coming at 7.5%, and we're down to 6.5%, we get down to 5, it's like something like that.
Well, we, I mean, the levy doesn't pass in the fall.
True, that's $4 million and 1.7.
4.1 million, we could be feeling it. Director Anderson.
I guess I want to ask our superintendent, do you think there's a reason to add that to the policy?
I would recommend it. I can tell you that I know of one situation where that, where the board made that decision and it was predicated on pandemic scenario with COVID. So save that. You know, you want to have positive control of it. I just also want to correct the record. It's not just a quarterly, you're going to get monthly. We already have established that practice in terms of what those data sets are. And we're obviously looking to improve or refine those in collaboration with you. So a quarter in a school system, I think, is too long on a, for an iterative basis, maybe for a more operational or strategic overview. Quarterly is just fine. It's what most businesses do in a quarterly business review. And we'll do that. I just think when it comes to the finance piece, it's got to be monthly. So that's what you're going to get.
So then I would be good with adding the board approval piece.
Any concerns with adding that from anyone?
None.
We'll make those updates and then bring it back next week.
725?
Yes.
For 725, I will defer to Director Holmgren.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I kind of got a bad voice, so we'll try to get through it. As you know, there's been a lot of changes in our, our student, our nutrition's fund and the way that we deliver meals and so forth, because now all our students get free breakfast and free lunch. So a lot of what you're seeing in this, changes in this poly, policy kind of relates to that. So if we go, if you're looking at the red, red line version under B, there used to be, if you wanted your free lunch, you had to fill out a form. You qualified, you get free lunch and breakfast and so forth. Well, now, we don't need to do that any longer. They're automatically free. So that's what B is about. When we get to C, same thing, our, we're never going to deny any type of a meal to any of our, our students because we get free meals for them, whether they have any amount in their account or not. If we move on to E, this was something that kind of happened in the past, especially when somebody didn't have enough amounts in their accounts, that they were given different types of meals. But now we're not doing that. No matter what's in your account, you get a, you get a full type A meal no matter what. And then when it comes to, I mean, students, if they want to have more food, they can buy more food, okay? That opportunity is there. But we are going to say, you need to have money in your account in order to buy that food. So we're not going to give out a second meal or a second, something else if you don't have any money in your account. Okay, does that make sense? And then G is just, it just added that everybody will be treated with respect in accordance with the statute here. So very, they're minor changes, but it's really because now everybody gets free and reuse. Everybody gets free lunch, free breakfast. Makes sense?
We had no issues with this at the Policy Committee. We are in alignment to move it forward.
Well, I have, I have Jack here tonight and he was going to, he'll follow up on the next policy. Okay?
Thank you. Jack, 704.
704. Evening, Board. So policy 704 is your fixed asset policy. And there is one change within the policy. It's highlighted in yellow. Essentially, it's an audit request that is making it so that any asset that falls below the threshold of $5,000, but is purchased in aggregate, we have the discretion of setting a dollar value of when that item is capitalized. So I like to think about laptops. When you buy an individual laptop, one laptop for $1,000, you're not going to capitalize that, you're not going to depreciate that over time. But if you go out and buy 100 laptops for $100,000, those you do want to recognize as a capital asset and appreciate those assets. So that's all that this change is doing. And it's giving us the discretion, the threshold to set that forth. This is a practice that we have been doing for the past two audit cycles. And it's just not in our written policy and we're trying to add it. Any questions?
Director Thompson.
There is no tax savings, there is no nothing. This is just a administrative categorization update and that's it.
Correct.
We didn't have any issues with this in our Policy Committee either.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack. Thanks, Will.
All right, move on. Data analytics update. Superintendent Bowman and Emily McDonald.
Do you need to stand on that?
I probably do need to stand on that.
Good evening, Board members, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen. So this evening, Dr. McDonald and I are coming forward to update you on where we are with our change management plan to get after reporting data, data and data analytics, what I like to call developing a common operating picture for the school district and also to monitor and demonstrate progress. Or, you know, you could also leverage this to isolate where you might need to, we collectively might need to focus resource effort in order to achieve the outcomes we're looking for. So we're, we are moving forward as rapidly as we can through a change management process in an organization this size. We want to talk a little bit about strategic plan. That's the, essentially the guiding document that, that we're operating from. You can see here, and I think last week, trying to get my days straight, last week, I shared with you the link to our strategic plan with all the detail that supports that. And hopefully you've had a chance to go through that over the past few, few days. But here states our mission, what our core values are, our goals. And then within those goals, we do have different mechanisms to confirm, deny, look at where we are with, with achieving those goals. And then a vision statement about where we are collectively and as an organization. So I'm not going to dive too deeply into it. You can obviously see it, read it, understand it. In the future, you will see data reporting on our goals and how we're progressing with regard to that. I know we've had in our, in our last session, opportunity to talk about strategic plan. And maybe there's change afoot for that. That's all fine. Until then, I'm leading by following that document and trying to address our issues as an organization through this mechanism here. One of the things with strategic planning that I do want to make sure we consider as we look down, down the road, my experience with these in two different school districts and probably six iterations of this, there's a very public process to it. And there's a very deliberate process. So this, I know in my last stint here, we initiated that process, took about a year's worth of work. Maybe a school year would be a better way to define that. So that's, that's where this derived from. And some of the, the goals and the daily desired experiences that we'll be sharing in the future are tied to this document. So just want to give some context with that. I'm going to go ahead and hand off to Dr. McDonald here. And we'll talk about continuous improvement. And I will get to the more details about where we are with data analytics and development process there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Great to be here today to partner with Superintendent Bowman to talk a little bit about data analytics, about goal setting, about data access and what really happens in our district around continuous improvement. I think my goal here is just to sort of ground us in what is currently happening in our district around data. Because as you are, as we are further developing our data analytics systems to provide you with the necessary data to make sure, monitor your goals, et cetera, I want to just talk about what that currently looks like. So we really look at data from a five-level system. Every level has a role in ensuring that we are continuously improving and that our students are ultimately as successful as they can be. So if, we'll start with the school board level. You see the light blue line. And basically, the lines indicate the level of specificity of the data at each level of the organization that currently exists. So at the school board level, we're really looking at high-level district-wide data. We're looking at organizational health overall in any goal area. So whether that is a goal around academics or a goal around finance or a goal around HR, teacher retention, et cetera, that is a level of data that the board generally utilizes around, to set their goals and to monitor their goals moving forward. If you look at the systems level, the systems level is where we operate at the district level on a day-to-day basis. So what we're really doing is we're utilizing data to analyze the system across all schools or grade levels, et cetera. We utilize that data to really inform us in terms of, do we have the right resources in place? Do we have the right procedures in place? Do we have the right instructional strategies in place across all grade levels or buildings, et cetera? Our third level then is site, site level data. And this is where our principals, our leaders of our buildings, as well as they all have site leadership teams. They really engage in looking at what's happening specific to their building. So we may implement something system-wide from the district level, but we know that there's nuance within buildings. So we will see different needs at different buildings depending on staff expertise, student population, et cetera. And so at the site level, the principal really works with their leadership team to look at data to say, are all of our students being successful? If not, what do we need to do differently? Do we need different professional development? Do we need to work with the directors to determine maybe there's a resourcing need or something else? And they engage with that, not only with their school leadership team, but also through their school improvement plans. So their school improvement plans are monitored through data with their teacher teams in the buildings. At the PLC level, you've heard PLCs a lot. I know you know what those are. They're teacher teams that have either course alike or grade alike classes. And they come together to really say, how are we doing collectively? If we have three teachers teaching third grade, how are students performing on our common assessments? How are they, what's the data look like for your classroom and my classroom? And that's an opportunity to share expertise, to share instructional strategies and resources and other things to make sure that the students are really being as successful as they can. And then finally, when we're talking about the, the classroom level, you know, we, we know that the magic happens at the classroom level. This is where teachers are really on a day-to-day basis looking at individual students' data to determine what's the next best step? What do our students need? Do they need re-engagement? Do they need some kind of advanced opportunity, et cetera? But they're really looking at the. But they're really looking at the students on an individual basis and then they would utilize strategies maybe from their PLC conversations with their colleagues and be implementing those. So, I think the bottom line is that we are all, whatever level we're operating in, we want to make sure that we have the right data in the right timeframe to make the right decisions moving forward to help our students be successful. And so, now that we're, oh, it's not that, it's this. Now that we're grounded in that, I do want to just give you a little snapshot of some of the data metrics that would fall in that school board level. We have a, what we call the CACR Plan, which is the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Plan. This is a state requirement and we set goals in, well, it used to be five areas, now it's four areas, then it was four areas, now it's back to five areas. This plan has high-level goals in the area of kindergarten readiness, closing the achievement gap or eliminating achievement disparities, career and college readiness, graduation, and then they, we used to have a reading goal requirement. They have moved that into the READ Act legislation. So, that came out. And then the last goal that they just added last year legislatively was around basically future preparation. Do they feel like they are lifelong learners? We also have our annual desired daily experiences survey. This directly aligns to our strategic plan work. We provide surveys to students, teachers, student staff and families related to our strategic direction and this provides us with data around how are, how are people currently feeling or interacting with our organization? We have all those numerical data. It's definitely more anecdotal or qualitative in nature because it's not a specific number metric. We turn them into number metrics. But we have school improvement plans, continuous improvement plans. We also have a district operational plan and so those are things that we utilize at the strategic level to determine whether or not we are moving forward and in the appropriate way. We used to have the literacy plan, local literacy plan, LLP. That has shifted now with the READ Act. The requirements of that are just hot off the presses, but it's quite a robust plan that requires reporting of how we are doing in the area of literacy, basically pre-K-12. It used to be focused on third grade. They're shifting that to more of a systems look. So, that will be coming. And then we've had a lot of conversations about, one of the things I feel like is really important is to ask our alumni about their experiences in preparation for whatever they chose to do next. So, Superintendent Bowman and Grace Olson, our Director of Communications and Public Relations have talked about how we can start getting into an iterative cycle with our alumni to find out how they feel about their preparation in the system as well. I think that's a really important metric that we've been missing for quite a while. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Superintendent Bowman and he will talk about where we are with our data analytics system, how we get data on an ongoing basis to you and where we are and where we're going.
Director Thompson.
Let me, let's just jump into this because I'm, I'm looking at the core data metrics and, and I appreciate these five bullets that, that you would like to incorporate at the strategic level, but like, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but like, I want to be able to know if our second graders are meeting, are reading at grade level. I mean, where, where is that on this list?
So, I think we're going to get to that. And if not, let's circle back as when Superintendent Bowman's done. I think that's one of the last slides.
Okay. Because I appreciate the, the daily experiences, that makes sense, but like, I want to know if our students are meeting, reading levels, math levels. And so, I understand the, the five different levels that you've got from the school board level, the system level, but I, I will pause and wait. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. Just to clarify, macro to micro, it's kind of the way I try to share and I know, I know that what, what we want is dynamic data and we want to have it in key performance indicator fashion and in an iterative cycle and we want to talk about academics, we want to talk about finance, we want to talk about HR and we want to talk about operations. Loud and clear. How do we get there is a change management process that, that I would like to speak to where we're at with that right now so that we can get at what you're saying, sir, about data and understanding what's going on with our kids.
I know you said academics, but I think one of the things we've been trying to talk about too is what is student success more broadly? So, to me, academics is one part of that versus how do we look at student success in other ways as well?
Affirmative.
Yeah.
Those are the exact same thing.
And affirmative to you as well. Here, let's start with architecture and sharing to you where we're at in developing the capability and capacity to organize the plethora of data that we have in a manner that can be shared, digestible and, and visible. Again, back to that idea and concept of a common operating picture. Organizationally, we've done it in the components that you, that Dr. McDonald shared and in, in multi-echelon fashion. To bring it to the right operational level and consolidate that in a manner that's reportable requires a data warehouse capability, it requires a data visualization capability and it requires expertise in how to take that data, shape it into data visualization that we are satisfied with from administration and school board. So, that's what we're driving toward here. What I have on this chart is kind of the architecture of where, where we are right now and what we're driving towards. So, our data visualization will come through Tableau. Tableau is embedded in Infinite Campus and we have EduClimber, EduClimber that provides us information down at the, for academics, behavior, social, emotional, tracking interventions and monitoring progress. That's down at the building classroom level, really classroom-type data and it's used in all our schools and that, that has been in the system since 2019. And reporting to a previous school board about how and what that is. In 2022, while I was away, Tableau came into being and that's used in all schools by administration. It does support high-level data analysis and again, high-level, operational level, strategic level of an organization and can do, if done right, can identify trends and system needs. We can look at enrollment trends, school-grade level academic performance, to your point, sir, behavior and attendance data and state and federal type reporting and more and more. The key is shaping the, the data collection for the key performance indicators that we all agree on that, that perform or provide the picture that we're looking for. And so, having those and if you go back a chart to the architecture, back one.
Oh, I went way back. Oh, I'm in charge now. Uh-oh.
You're out of control.
Who's going to give me the remote?
Is there a motion, Director?
One, two more.
If you could give me the architecture.
There you go.
Okay. So, we, we know that these are the locales, Power School, Z Finance, that's our financial, has some HR in there, recruiting and hiring through frontline, data going into a data warehouse. Right now, we are working, literally working on getting that data passed through and set up so that it's feeding into our data warehouse. We have had several meetings about how do we structure financial data, taking our best assessment based on feedback that we've received through a variety of different communication methods from you as school board members to try to land in a spot where, where we can demonstrate with a picture, a visualization of that data. Same with academics and to your point, Director Anderson, we want to talk about what is, what defines a student and student success, but we all, there is an academic component and there is the other social, emotional type things that we need to address. So, again, it's trying to get to that right data set. And I know there's frustration with, what are we waiting for? What are we waiting for? I'm going to tell you what we're waiting for. Getting that in order. That's what we're waiting for and it's, and nobody's sitting around the campfire singing kumbaya. What we're doing is feverishly working out the details to do this so that we can do this in a manner that has staying power for the future beyond all of us and leverages that. There's the whole AI scenarios where AI is going to overlay this kind of thing. So, I personally apologize that I'm not fast enough, but I also feel very proud that a lot of people are doing a lot of work to get this set and it's a change management process. You talked to me about change management, sir. This is, this is what we're in and going as fast as, as I know how to go with the assets that I have, sir.
Director Nicholson.
What's the timeframe right now then?
Well, my goal is to be able to have a, a common operating picture agreed upon and iteratively rolling so for the next school year, but we're going to, we're going to, between now and then and through the summer, work with you, excuse me, and you'll get a thing here in a minute that's going to, going to help us get more information, more focused information from you about how to start shaping KPIs. And internally, we're going to go through what we have and try to organize that into essentially key performance indicators. Now, I just want to share with you that, that I've done this in another school district in a, when we didn't have data warehouses and you didn't have data visualization, we did it with spreadsheets and two individuals who were collecting information and it was a bear to get it set up. It was on cruise control to keep it flowing. This will be better than that. This will be better by an exponential factor of 10, no doubt. And then if you get AI involved here, it's going to go another level. So, I, I'm with that. I just want to make sure that the foundation is solid and done properly. So, to your question, sir, we should be able to go, roll into the fall with two things. One is the four areas I'm talking about, but also with a quarterly business review that's going to be more robust than that because it's going to cover more areas. So, that's, that's where I'm striving to and I do see, and I've had multiple conversations with leadership about how this can be powerful for us collectively as a school system and to help our, our community see better what's, what we're working at and trying to do. But it'll also show some, some challenges that we have too and then I think we get into that resource conversation.
Yeah. Director Thompson.
Just a couple of comments. Thank you for this, for the overview. Having the finances, the, the data elements, scores, MCA, that makes sense so that we can establish a very robust, you know, Lakeville data warehouse and we'll dub it like LDW for now. I see EduClimber, it's pointing down. Is, is there plans for the data within EduClimber to feed into the data warehouse or right now it's, because I'm looking at this and there's two separate tools. Is that, is that, how am I interpreting this?
I would, I would say two things. One is EduClimber is, I think, a level that is not school board level. Now, data sets in there aggregated can paint a picture that is school board level.
Yep.
So, the, so that, that's how I would answer that question. EduClimber is a different system, but we get, we get data feeds and I'll, I'll ask Tracy, I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but I think the data flow from EduClimber into Tableau is a thing? No? Okay. That's why it's depicted that way. You want to help Director Thompson on that and me too?
Good evening, everyone. EduClimber information comes directly out of our Infinite Campus Student Information System. The data warehouse information, so you'll see up at the top, MCA, testing and Fastbridge Learning. Those go into our data warehouse. They go into Infinite Campus and then go into EduClimber. And so, EduClimber, we don't have that going back into campus because we already have everything in the data warehouse.
Are, are there things that are being populated in EduClimber by staff? And so, how, so how does that go up?
So, there are, but it's classroom-level details that we don't see a need to go up into the data warehouse.
Director Thompson.
Just a follow-up question because I see behavioral as a, as an element in EduClimber. I agree, I don't need to see classroom, like whatever, but I, but I think as a, as a school board, it would be good to know how many behavioral infractions do we have at the, at the site level and at the district level? And so, if that's not at Infinite Campus, how are you going to connect those two together?
So, our DIRES reporting is state-reported behaviors that are major behaviors. Those are being reported in the Infinite Campus data warehouse and we do have Tableau picture of that. It's the minor behaviors that are being reported into EduClimber that we don't have that picture. We rely on our staff to look in EduClimber at those behaviors so they can get a full picture of that student.
Director Carbone.
Yeah. I, I see this as now and the not-too-distant future. When, when I looked at the, the slide that you showed with the pyramids and, and the depth of the data that's released, if you will, or accessible based upon the five categories there, the board was at the highest level or the 40,000-foot view. When you look at going down two or three levels, one of the things that we're trying to ascertain, I'm talking about now, not the distant future, one of the things we're trying to ascertain is what is academic success and where's the empirical evidence that it's happening or it's not happening? And that may vary from, from variable to variable because if we don't have that, if we don't understand baselines, it will be very difficult for us to establish goals for ourself, for the, for the superintendent and all the, and cascading all the way down. That's why if there's a way, going back to the pyramid slide, to get down a level or two to give us information, that would be very helpful. You know, school against school, grade level against grade level, a subject category versus subject category. It would start giving us a picture of what we need to embrace for goals to get academic success up and, and what we should be thinking.
Well, do we, do we do that now? I mean, do we have that data? I mean, are you doing that at the site level?
That's what I, that's why I'm asking because of the, the pyramid slide. It looks like it's, Director Thompson, it looks like it's there and maybe we can get it. I mean, I think that's where the question's going.
Well, one other element to this that, that I guess I would ask for clarification on is, we have a lot of static data.
Yeah.
And we have lagging data and I hear that we, that, that based on everything you said implied is dynamic data and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to get to. Again, I would say data-rich, but organizationally in terms of that common operating picture, not so much because we're not, we're not doing that. Again, three levels that I look at in organizations. Strategic, that's where you're at. Operational, you're also there. Then there's tactical, which is classroom, teacher and, and our educators. If, if you're running a classroom, you don't need me. You don't need teachers. So, we got to figure this out and I don't mean that pejoratively, I'm just trying to aggregated data that paints a picture in order for us to be able to calibrate, resource, I think is the goal. I think that's what, I hear you telling, saying to me, you want to do and use data to do that and you want dynamic data where you can click in and, and drill down and I want to partner with you and work, figure that out and it, it'll be a little messy. But if we can get there by the fall and get into an iterative, I think we'll start cooking with gas, as I like to say. But I do think I understand what you're driving at. I just want to make sure we're, we're doing it in a manner that is going to yield the results that you seek. And I'll work with you as hard as I can on that.
Yeah, I have two things. So, I fully agree in terms of, I don't think-
Yeah, I have two things. So I fully agree in terms of, I don't think, you know, even when we say school against school, I think every school, which I can't speak for every school, but every school seems to have unique challenges and great things happening and they're just all a little different. And some have certain programs that others don't and things like that that make it very difficult, I would say, to compare directly what's happening at every school. And so in my opinion, when we think about where we should be, we need to put our trust in the two of you to deliver on the broader expectations. And how we get there is really, that's more the tactical that you're talking about, working with your principals who have a much more, much better pulse on what the challenges are in the, I mean, even as we think about the boundary changes last year and how that shifted demographics at schools. That is a new thing that principals are dealing with. They're, they're just dealing with changes. So I think, I definitely think I do not, we do not need to get down to classroom-level data. I think it's a dangerous thing to get to even pitting one school against another and how that's going to affect community perceptions about schools when, when people don't know all the intricacies. And the one clarifying thing I wanted to ask as well is my understanding based on what you're saying is we already had all these things. These are not new expenditures for the district. It's just better use or better utility of what we have available to us. Is that correct? Or are there new expenses associated with this?
Well, for, I just want to address a couple of things. One is there, even though there's differences, school to school, there are threads of continuity. And I think that the data can, can show those threads of continuity. And we can calibrate ourselves, I think, more efficiently if we're doing it off of a common operating picture that we've agreed upon.
Systems level.
Systems level, yes.
Yeah. Director Carbon.
Amber Hester.
Yeah. If I, if I may clarify something. When I mention school versus school, what I'm suggesting is, and I'm not a WWF wrestling man. What, what I'm suggesting is when you mine data and you slice and dice data, you will find aberrances. And that's what the purpose of it. Once you see those aberrances in school with school A, school B, school C, then you'll understand where weaknesses or strengths are. Maybe there are strengths that need to be duplicated. Maybe there are weaknesses that need to be addressed. So that's, that's really what I'm suggesting.
Yes, I, yes, I wanted to just add to, or thank you for that comment. I, it, when we, when we look at the systems level, Director Carbon, this is exactly the work that the directors and the coordinators at the district level do. Is that they are like on an iterative basis, slicing and dicing the data and looking at first of all, what's happening across the whole system? So where are we seeing success across the system? Where are we seeing some challenge across the system? Because that means we have to do something, say, for example, at every element, if it's an elementary, every elementary, right? And then they're looking for, are there nuance in that data that suggests that a building in particular needs some different type of support to meet the needs of the students? So then that what they would do is then go work with that individual principal to kind of unpack what's going on there and, and to put some improvement plans in place. So yes, so your thinking is exactly our thinking on that.
I believe Director Cameron had a question or comment.
Yeah, I'm just going to add to this conversation. And I, I think, and Emily, I think this is what you just articulated. And that is that 194 is monitoring the performance of each school. And each school has goals and, and performance indicators for growth, but we're not going to pit or, it's not going to be a school versus a school model. I, I agree with Dr. Anderson that, that sets up complicated community relations. I've seen it happen in other districts. And, and I think because of the student demographics and different programs housed within each school, it's impossible to compare. But I think the expectation, I think from the board is that each school should be improving on an annual basis.
Director Nicholson.
I agree with that, that we should be targeting improvement at every building. I think it's a little bit naive to think that we're not already getting compared school to school. We have an MCA, break it out by school. It's already there. That's happening. What I think the question is, and the, the thing that Paul has said twice, is that we want to make sure you're doing it. Now, it's not that, I don't think anybody's saying that we don't believe it. We just want to see it. So like, what does it look like for you? Like, how do you go about it? Without any of this stuff connected at this point in time, you show us system data, okay? So you show us MCAs, we see negative trends. We see negative national report card trends. We see negative FastBridge scores. Look at the one slide. If you want to go down one more, not that one. The data metric strategic level slide. So if you look at this, I'm just trying to gather this here, but student daily experience, looks like K through two, they love it. 50% of them love it by nine through 12 when you get down to question three. So again, these are negative trends to me. So I, I think what he's trying to say is from a baseline perspective, you guys have shown a lot of negative trends. I know we do better than that. Like that, the science team that was in here, pretty frickin' awesome. Like that, that was cool. That was, that's the kind of stuff that makes them excited to learn. You know they're doing things. We know that the schools are doing things that are more than just the metrics that you guys put up there. I, I want to know, there's got to be something more that you guys know that we're doing good at all the buildings or in some way, shape or form, shaping the future for this. And I think what he's trying to say, and what I've been trying to say multiple times, is we're kind of curious to know where we really are. And if, if we're just going to be seeing the, the system data stuff, so I said before, if it's just the system data, that's not looking great to me. Like, what's your report card? Like, if I gave you a report card, show me what you would score us K through 12, given that information. Well, what grade would you guys give in terms of leading the district and, and where we are from a academic perspective? I mean, now we, you know, look at those three. I mean, that's, that's the, you know, student satisfaction, basically. It's, you know, customer satisfaction kind of metrics. Like, they're going the wrong way. So my question is more around, we have data. You guys are showing us we have some pockets of data or we're, we're looking at some things. What are we doing different? What are we going to do different next year? From what we did the last three years, from COVID, nothing's made a reverse. We haven't gone the other direction yet. Like, nothing on a metrics perspective has. So I'd like to know, what are we going to do different to change that trajectory? There's got to be something. I know you guys are working on stuff. I know your team. Like, I've, I've met with a lot of people and it's very interesting when I meet with them individually. I know there's a lot of stuff happening. It just, it, it hasn't reflected back the same way in the data pieces that we get shown. So I, I just want to make that point clear. Because I, everything you said, yeah, we're going in the right direction. Clean data, good inputs. We understand where it's going to go, what it's going to do, where we're going to get. Awesome. But we have some information and we should be on some sort of a course correct. That would be my assumption that we are going to put some effort into doing something or making some sort of system level change on those trajectories. That's where I'm struggling.
Director Cameron.
So Director Nicholson, I appreciate what you're saying, but I feel like I'm hearing you actually say something different than what we're asking. And that is, we want to see the metrics, but what you're saying is we know the metrics and we want to see change. So I think we need to figure out as a board, where do we want to put energy right now? And I, I agree that there are opportunities for improvement and change. I, I think we have enough data to figure, and I think the district is already doing that, to figure out where to leverage. We've already heard it in reports. But the board then needs to have, have those conversations about how do we resource the needs that are being addressed? And that's what we have not done yet.
Director Thompson.
I, I, I would like the data. And, and for me, I would like to know because I believe it is my role as a school board member is to monitor and provide, and that's how we define governance. I would not be in a position to say, this is what you need to fix, but I just need to monitor. I just need to see, are we progressing? And so the general framework that, that you guys have in place and the direction you want to go with data analytics, I'm 100% on board and willing to let us know what you need to ensure that we hit that September date, whether it be financial, whether it be resources. Like, you need this information that allows us to drive where we're going to go over the next couple of years. In parallel, while that's being done, and we won't get that until September, is there an opportunity to get a course set of basics that say, what percentage of our students are meeting reading expectations at the grade level, at math, at science, and by site level? And if that is a data element that we can get, right? Then we have at least that initial snapshot between now and September. But then on the back end, we've got a team that probably already have tactical plans already in, in flight to course correct that. So maybe that's what we also want to know. So while we have this data analytics in, in flight in, in September, have a snapshot of percentage of students that are meeting reading, math, science expectations, and then understand what is, what, what has the district have in place that they're going to course correct this or, or already have in flight? And maybe we don't have anything in flight. If we don't, we don't, you know? And that's fine. But let's air that out so we understand where we are at. And back to what you said, Director Nicholson, what's the plan if there is? Because I'm sure we have something. So.
Let's, let's let them finish up here and then we can discuss it amongst the board members.
So with, with Tableau, right now our priority visualizations at the general district level, enrollment counts, class sizes, these are things you all have seen and/or heard or been dealing with through a variety of different reports that the district has given. Then academic information, graduation rates, which we have on a one-year lag. In-progress norm reference, reading and math proficiency and reading and math growth through FastBridge. And then in-progress MCAs, which are our criterion reference, focusing on reading, math, science, and using benchmark data. So if we go to the next chart. So we're going to move ahead with, so you'll get a, an email here shortly that will give you login information. The second bullet there on Google Form for question submission, we're trying to do some data collection, asking you to kindly do some homework as you look at that and share with us, based on what you're seeing. Some of the comments, obviously, that you're offering now is helpful for us to try to shape that and prepare how we're going to report out on information for you. And there's also a video reference for navigation, just to try to simplify it, if, if you need that. Yeah, just want to make sure you know that that's coming. That is be dynamic data access that you'll have. And then we'll just develop things from there so, so that we can get to the right place for the fall. So first, first big step forward here.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah.
Just really quickly back to the slide. When you log into Tableau tonight or tomorrow or whenever you do, you will see those first four or five things. You'll have immediate access. They're already in there. We've gotten them in there for you. That's just really more general information about the district, not specific to academics necessarily other than the graduation rate to some degree. We are on a short timeline around those in-progress items. They are currently being worked on. And so we will certainly give you a heads up. This is not a September. This is a shorter term as we are trying to get data into the system to provide you what you're looking for. This is the start of that. So you, as Superintendent Baumann said, will have access to both our criterion reference, our MCA, which of course is a lagging indicator. We know that. We do use our FastBridge norm reference assessment as a, as a leading indicator three times a year so we can track over time. And so you'll be able to look at that data as well. And Superintendent Baumann will let you know the minute that we are finished getting that data into the system. But as he sort of said at the very end here, we are committed to getting the data, not only the academic data, but the, the data in the area of finance and HR, et cetera, in so that you would have a one-stop shop as board members to go in there and be able to look at not only our lagging data, but our leading data. And it, it will be part of our quarterly review as well. So we're trying to get in a more iterative progress with you as a board to keep you more updated as we go through the year. And I know you're, you will be talking about goals tonight. And so I think this really aligns perfectly with that conversation as you're deciding where you want your energy and the energy of the district over the next year and the energy of the superintendent and myself over the next year or so. So, so I will be sending, as soon as I sit down, I will be sending you the email with your information. And you can go right in and start just poking around at those, those higher-level items. And then we'll circle back as soon as we have that academic data ready for you.
Any other questions on our presenters before? Amber, do you have a question?
Yeah, two things. One, and I see that it was abstract in the presentation. I know at the high school level for our MCAs, our, our participation rate is around 50%, give or take. And I realize that this is like a statewide challenge. Is Lakeville thinking about any creative ways to increase our student participation rate with the MCAs at the high school level?
Yes. Thank you so much for that question. We, yes, our math, math in particular is the one where we tend to see more students choosing not to for a variety of reasons. That's the one that's usually around 50%. We see higher participation in reading. We see pretty high levels of participation at our elementary. So the data is definitely more reliable at our elementary level and, and our middle to an extent. So our hotspot is definitely high school math, but high school in general in terms of the opt-outs. And we know that that's, we're not alone in that. That said, we have had, we, we have had some surface-level conversations. The principals had some thoughts about ways in which we could incentivize that and what that might look like. But we haven't really sat down and had the deep dive conversation about what would that actually mean or what would that look like? So they have, they have, actually have a lot of great ideas about how we could encourage participation there. So I think we have to circle back to that if we want to increase the participation rate for that.
Great. Thanks. My second question is, and I've been asked this a couple of times since the Board PEC went live. How, what level of detail will the board have when we log in? Like, can we see student-level data, classroom-level data? What will we have access to? And there's great concern in the community about student-level data.
There will not be any student-level data. Grade-level data would probably be the, the most narrow band right now that they're working on. That's what they're working on right now.
Great. Thanks.
Director Anderson.
Okay. So just two, two questions here, questions here. One is, I just want to come back to just cost of some of what we're talking about. So just to clarify, because I asked that earlier and I don't think you spoke to that.
I apologize. I meant to answer that and went on a rabbit trail. So we, we are, we, we need a, a data programmer and coordinator for Tableau. So I would say that's the cost so far. I mean, the biggest challenge for us is taking what we have and aligning it so that we're pulling the right data that we need from the right sources in as clean a manner as possible. But as we develop the, the indicators and the data visualization, we, we have to have that resident in our organization. So that's a cost. I, I would have to get you the number in terms of salary for that position. That's the only one. I don't know. Tracy, is there any other? We're not, no, I think that was it. We did, we were looking at doing something more robust and talked to a, a vendor, actually talked to two, but figured out internally we were in a better position than, than, than I thought we were.
Okay. So it seems like, because I just want to be, as we kind of talk about the board goals tonight as well, there's a lot of tonight as well, there's a lot of things in these goals that would require, I mean, and obviously this is a draft to discuss, but there's a lot of things that would require more resources. And so sometimes I think, like, I am a fan of data and understanding it, and I think we need to stay at a high level with the data, but I also think about what are we, how are we prioritizing this potentially over other really significant needs in the district? And so, just want to make, like, it sounds like you dug in and you, we have resources that we can better utilize, and hiring one person is a much better outcome than what we originally thought, which is good. So just wanted to clarify.
Well, I look at this as a yes and. I mean, there's, there are a lot of things that we are working on, and I think this points to Mr. Nicholson's point about the two pieces. What's the common operating picture? What's the action-reaction cycle with regard to that? And how do we take what we're doing now and level it up to align with what our data and our common operating picture tells us? I think all that is good. Getting there is the challenge, and that's okay.
I had a question for Emily. Looking at the priority visualizations in Tableau, we talked about K through nine is for FastBridge, and you said that's a good leading indicator. And then high school, we're struggling to get MCA participation. So what do we have as far as indicators at 10, 11, and 12th grade?
Well, we don't have anything, we have been in, this is a resource problem. If we had the opportunity, what we would do is we would move to a FastBridge K-12. That would be the ultimate goal because we do not have, we have the ACT, but again, that's a lagging indicator. But our scores in that area have always been very strong. They don't necessarily align with what we see in the MCAs. So really, we're looking at, for high school, we're looking at the MCA, and we're looking at the ACT, we're looking at graduation rate. But otherwise past ninth grade, we are lacking in that area in terms of a resource to be able to support more leading indicators at that level.
And would you agree, I think Sandy George, you mentioned this earlier, that the MCA is probably a better indicator of the system health versus student performance?
100%. The MCAs are really, because it's criterion referenced, it's really intended to tell you where your gaps are in your organization overall. So I don't want to get too into like a deep dive tonight, but we do, Sandy and her team, they really, they look at everything down to the benchmark, and they analyze it and code it. So it's like, across the system, are we performing well on this individual benchmark? And are we not performing well on this benchmark? And then where are our pockets, like I mentioned earlier? And then what do we need to plug in? Is it a professional development issue? Is it a resource issue? Oftentimes, when we talk about the MCAs in the system, we find that the resources that we're using aren't addressing all of the required standards and benchmarks. So then we have to figure out, how do we supplement that? Because students aren't having experiences necessarily, or robust experiences with those particular standards or benchmarks. And we can come back and talk a lot more in-depth about what that looks like. So, you know, when we talk about what are we doing, how are we trying to shift the system, that'd be a great conversation to have.
So, going back to that then, if we're talking about, you know, a lot of what the public sees as MCA, and kind of grades our schools and compares our schools.
For sure.
I mean, what would be a better KPI that we could use, you know, to show the public, hey, this is how our students are actually doing, and how their outcomes are actually improving?
Well, you know, off the top of my head, because I do think that, and a couple of board members mentioned it tonight, is that aspect of sort of looking at the whole-child experience, right? So I do think our ACT is, we have high, high levels of participation. I think our grad rate is a really good metric to look at. And besides our desired daily experience, which again is more personalized, personal experience related, I think having an alumni survey would serve us really well. If one of our goals as a system and our mission is to ensure that our students are prepared for their future, then we need to be engaging our kids that are in their futures to find out how their experience was in the system. Because it is more than just, and we all know, it's more than just one test on one day at one time. It's how are we providing a full scope of experience to help our students be successful over time in whatever it is that they choose to do next? And some of those things aren't assessed on a MCA or an ACT.
Director Anderson. Oh, Director Cameron.
Well, kind of a follow-up to this with the secondary level, and I realize this is not like a, it's not similar to like an ACT or MCA in terms of a, they're not lagging indicators. But to what extent is Lakeville at the high school level, has Lakeville implemented a system where when a student shows signs of, like, early indicators of stress, whether it be missing so many classes, you know, tardies or absenteeism, or failing in a class, you know, things like that? Are the APs, deans, whatever title we use, and/or the counselors, is there a system in place to try to catch these kids early to create systems of support around them?
Yes, absolutely. And I would definitely say that they are more robust now that we have counselors in our system, because as you all know, our APs, previously deans, were stretched so thin because they were trying to meet the needs of large number of students in every single area. Excuse me. So we have some processes in place, just like we monitor academic progress, like, through the credit check process, like, are kids on track for graduation? Are they attending school? We have similar processes in place around the social-emotional side for earlier intervention. I don't think we'd be where we are if we didn't have those, in fact, I know we wouldn't be where we are if we didn't have dedicated staff to be able to support our students in that area.
Director Thompson, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I think it's more of just a tactical way, because I think you shared, we do have a gap at the secondary level. And I recall, you know, with my son in ninth and 10th grade on campus, we know, or I know, when a homework assignment is turned in, or when it's late, and I know when he has exams. And so, while, I don't mean to get too tactical, there is an opportunity where if, when we start looking at that data, we can see how many students in ninth grade reading are doing their homework assignments, and what, are they getting A's, or are they getting 100%? But then when they get an exam, and they're like, they get like 60%, there's a gap there. Like, why did that happen? And now, if their homework assignments are at 50%, and their exams are at 90%, like, what is going on? And so that's just more of a current-state dashboard where, you know, semester, quarter after quarter, all of our students are getting A's and A's and A's, and then the LAGER indicators, the MCAs, they bomb that. So obviously, like, so this is where we're trying to get to, to be able to see, all right? Are our students getting, meeting the requirements at the state level, but yet, without the state-level information, if we just look at the campus infinite number or data, it might show that we are meeting expectations, but then if you dive deeper, all of our students are getting A's in homework but bombing exams. And like, that doesn't make sense. I mean, and if that's happening, then how do you get 100% in your homework assignment and not pass your exam? That makes zero sense. And so, those are the tactical things that we can, that again, I don't want to figure out why that is the case, but at a macro view, I'd love to know quarterly, you know, 90% of our students are doing great, but they're not doing great at exams. Want to give you a heads-up, here is our plan that we're going to go look into in the second half. I'm like, oh, thanks for that info. And then you move on. So that's just one use case that you could use at the secondary level.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys need a break? Are you okay? Need a break? Yeah, we're just going to take a break till 8 o'clock, and then we'll come back and jump back in. Go on recess.
We're going to jump into, we're going to jump into the board discussion on data analytics. Further discussing the KPIs that we might want to see, which will need further input from the district as well. So it's not something that I expect to get an agreement on tonight, but if we can get a little bit further down the road, that'd be great. I'm going to again kind of suspend formalities so people can just jump in as we continue this discussion. Amber, you can shout out, or if you want to raise your hand, we'll try to catch you. Yeah Brett had, just for the public's sake, so Brett Nicholson had provided some draft documents that he'd kind of been working on, some different concepts, and so I shared them with the rest of the board and the public, just as a reference point, some ideas for us to discuss, work from, and then I do expect there to be other comments as well. People have other ideas, other metrics we should be looking at, and going back to what Director Anderson was saying earlier, what does success mean, because there are probably some different metrics that we should be considering. So Brett, I'm going to turn it over to you to start it off.
Thank you. So I just want to talk through this real quick. So this is a concept. So don't, don't look at the data as something I'm proposing. I'm not saying we should use it. I'm not even saying it's good or accurate, or even a best practice, or something that would make sense for this district. I literally put it together as an idea of a framework, and I wanted to articulate the point. If we set board goals, and we have things we want to see happen for this district, we want to see, you know, academic achievement, growth measures, or whatever it may be, and I'm using these just because this was something easy for me to create. Six board goals, six superintendent goals that line up with that, lagging indicators that would be managed by our DO, and then leading indicators, that would be the stuff that would roll up from the classroom, from the schools, the principals. They would be managing the leading indicators. Now, again, they may be doing this already. There may be pieces of this in place. What I would like us to think about is we kept, we circled board goals, and we had all sorts of topics of conversation around board goals. So my intent with putting this out there is, if we're going to put board goals out there, and set goals for our superintendent, they should cascade down to our district office staff, so that they have things that they should be looking at and monitoring to make sure that the schools are achieving those, and the schools down at their level should have a set of metrics that they're looking at to say, we were successful today, or we were successful this week. Now, again, after all this conversation and talking with some principals, I do know we do some of this. I think it's somewhat informal, and it's not consistent across the board. Now, I'm not saying we are the ones who have to implement or push down leading and lagging indicators. So just to be clear, I'm not saying we need to set those. I'm not saying we need to monitor them, but what I am saying is that when we set the board goals, they should have some sort of linkage to things at a lower level, so that we know if our work practices in the classroom are achieving what we want, what we think they're going to achieve, or we think they're going to do for us, those should roll up to district level metrics, to our superintendent's goals, and eventually that should help us achieve our goals as a board. That's the concept. So every one of these six, if you go down, you can link it to the numerical order in the next category. So it's, it's an idea, it's a concept, it's a, it's a way to think through metrics, that I just want to make sure that if we're going to talk about board goals, we have a framework to sort of frame the conversation a little bit. So it's not just, we want to improve academic performance, like, that's super out there, it's very hard to, you know, pinpoint, measure, what does that mean to you, it's going to be different to me, it's going to be different to him, it's going to be different to you, different to Amber, like, we're all going to look at things differently. So it's a concept. So think of it that way. Don't, don't drill into any of the specific verbiage, percentages, metric number type stuff. It's an idea of how would it all link up, and how would we know that from the ground up, we're making progress?
Yeah, thanks Brett. I think, first of all, I appreciate the effort here, and it, and it does give us something to springboard off of, which is much appreciated. I do think that one of the things that, that we need to focus on is prioritizing, and my sense is, is that finance and academic outcome achievement goals should be top priority, and then work our way down. Now, you could argue that every one of these things have some connection to academic achievement and/or financial viability, but I, I think we, when we go through this, and as we discussed, we need to prioritize from academics to finance, and then work our way down into, into some of the other goals. And one last comment about the number of goals, and one of the things I found in business is, you can have three pages of goals, and none of them get hit. You really need to have the right number of goals that are, so people can focus on them and work accordingly.
Amber, are you unmuting to say something?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Do you want to mute when you're not saying something, just so, because there's some background noise? Brett, thank you for all the work that you did here. I do appreciate it. And I like the idea of kind of chaining, I did not know what COS stands for, but now I know, so thank you. The only thing I would ask us to think about too is, so this seems like district level goals, that then all the pieces of the system would contribute to in terms of being successful. I also want us to think about board specific goals. So to me, for instance, a great board goal is for us to pass our levy this fall. That is pretty critical to our system. So how do we support our DO, how do we get engaged in the community, how do we do the things to pass our levies, or levy, or levies, whichever one it is?
Can I just say, I, I agree with you there, and I apologize, I didn't get that one on there, and I didn't have any financial metrics on this, because it was like trying to, I was trying to just get six things that you could sort of see how it would flow.
Sure.
So I just, but yes.
No, and the only, the only other thing I wanted to say is, the, I know, I don't know when we're going to get the survey data from that Leatherman, Morse Leatherman survey. Is it coming?
I think 13th of May is the proposed agenda
Okay.
For, for report out on that.
Yeah, great. Because to me, what we don't really have at this point is a board assessment, so kind of evaluating, granted, we've only been this board for a short number of months, but I think it would help us to evaluate ourselves as a board, evaluate our superintendent, have him do his own self-evaluation as well, have the district office evaluate, like, go through the survey process, which part of that is our community input as well, to help us figure out what we think are the important things, but also what our community thinks are the important things, and how we should build our goals based off of the information that we have. So for all of us thinking about data, I feel like we are kind of lacking data right now on driving our development of goals. So for instance, if, if public perception of the board is not great, let's say, it has been a downward trend for a period of time. So maybe it's better, that's great, but let's say it's not. How are we going to address that? Because that's a pretty critical element for this district, is to make sure that the public perception of the board is generally positive. What, what is coming out of that survey data to tell us what the community cares about in terms of how their students are doing, what they think is needed, like those kinds of things. So, like, mental health is, I obviously am advocate for mental health, that comes up. How do we better support our students on a mental health front, which should turn into better academic achievement? So I, I really like the buildup in terms of all levels, but I also think, like, we don't have the information to really kind of help. Like, I feel like it would be helpful to do our own self-assessments, community assessment, get all of that information to help drive what our goals are.
Can you build out that a little bit? What do you, what do you mean exactly? Like, what information, and what kind of questions would you ask?
So we can, we have previous ones that we've done, our self-evaluation for the board, our evaluation, well, the evaluation of the superintendent has to happen, and I know we have an opportunity to watch a MSBA presentation on it, for those who weren't able to attend it live, but we have examples of what those things look like.
Well, I mean, for, if you're sending out a survey to the public to help guide, you know, how the board should be operating, I guess.
That's the Leatherman survey data. I'm just saying, let's say, let's say the satisfaction rating is not as high as we want it to be. What do we think that's about? How do we function better as a board? Those kinds of things. So like, board goals, to me, like, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't necessarily think all these things should directly align, necessarily. Like, there might be some of our own goals that really have to do with our own internal kind of processes and function. It makes sense that some of them would relate to each other, and my guess is that the superintendent would create goals for his leadership based on kind of our direction, but that we might have some more personal goals as a board. So that, when I think about board goals, like, I think some of this is district goals, that we're saying are important at that level, but then I also think, what are our board goals?
Do you have a recommendation for any?
Do you have a recommendation? I think, like, we've been talking about, just, how do we, how are we going to function as a board? How are we going to do, how are we going to run our processes? Those are things that I think just will help our communication, and help us function better. So I think some of it is just, like, given as we talked about the board handbook, and those kinds of things, that just better outline what the expectations are, you know, what our board determines are the processes that we think we should follow, those kinds of things that are more procedural, and not necessarily policy-based. So that's an example. Like, we could put a goal is to get our board management kind of handbook done by the end of this year, or the next school year. That, that's something we go through several meetings with Kim, and we get that done. That's a board goal. That's, that's a clear, kind of smart goal, where we have an achievable outcome.
Sorry, I'm not really calling on people. You can just go.
Yeah. I would agree with Director Anderson. I, I think there is, in my opinion, value in having some sort of board goals. And so, as I shared before, I, we've got to break this up into kind of three different levels. And Director Nicholson, I agree with you. I like your document. I like how the chain of the command, or was it chain of succession, or wherever it is, where you've got your top level goals, and your next level of folks, they need to be able to support those goals, and the next level down supports that. So conceptually, a hundred percent aligned with, with that framework. I view this as, the top level is, what are our school district goals? The next level is, what will the school board, and what will the superintendent do to enable those school district goals? And then the next level down would be at the school level, where, what's going on in the classrooms, which will, which will be driven by the school board and the superintendent, which will be driven by the school board, or the school district as a whole. And so I came up with a crazy acronym, we'll call it the basic plan with two S's. And so, we need to have a school district plan, let me rephrase that, an annual school district goal around these six categories. Do we have, do we have, do we have goals around what we want the budget to look like? Do we have goals around what the academics looks like? Do we have goals around what the staff and the students look like? Do we have goals around innovation, whether it be AI, or whatever it may be? And then do we have goals around community relations? So that's considered like the basic plan. You've got six different categories, and then what kind of goals you want to establish around those six key buckets? And then, once we figure that out, we go to the next level down, and then as a board, what do we need to do to support that? Because again, at the end of the day, we're running a school district. And so if we're going to create goals, we need to create a goal for the school district. And so, while I understand, and do appreciate having board goals, but our primary focus ought to be, is the school district performing, delivering on whatever our core basic is, which is school district stuff, right? So maybe to help categorize goals, but also help us prioritize, what we want to go after is, start documenting, what kind of goals do you want, if it's related to the budget? What kind of goals do you want, if it's related academics? What kind of goals do you want for staff satisfaction, student satisfaction? What kind of goals do we want for innovation within our school district? And then lastly, what kind of goals do we want for our community relations category, so that our community feels that our school district is, is in a fantastic shape, or is performing well? And so, once we start, you know, spitballing things in, in those categories, we will at least have this kind of matrix or document that says, all right, you've got six things in budget, you've got nine things in community, you've got 10 things in innovation. Obviously, we have to start horse trading, which one's a top, top item?
Prioritizing.
And then we make it to the next level down, and say, all right, Superintendent Bowman, what are you going to do to go after these goals that we've identified at the basic level? What are we going to do at the school board level? And then that cascades down to, all right, tactically, Mr. Bowman, what are you going to do to make sure that these are at the classroom level? So that's my recommendation as a framework, but I'll pause here, because that's an idea.
Yeah. I mean, I think a lot of that aligns with the current goals of the district, you know, that are on the strategic plan, you know, number one, improve our teaching and learning practices and processes to increase student achievement. Number two, improve our systems of support to better meet the academic, behavioral, and social, emotional needs of our district. And this is all on page 201 of the, the board packet. I mean, I think a lot of those.
But, but that's too high level. I think we've got to get into that.
Yeah, yeah. But we need the, in yours are high level too, the question is, what are we using for the KPIs to track, if we're actually working toward, I mean, I'd like to think that our kids are doing better than that, and I'd like to be able to, I mean, I'd like to think that our kids are doing better than that, and I'd like to be able to show them with data. Yeah, so it's what KPIs we're using, and I, and I do agree, I mean, there are other components to it as well, that I think the data will assist with. Because we can, I mean, funding is obviously an issue, right? Resource allocation. And we had a levy fail last year, but imagine if you were able to attach some data, you know, to the asks that we had last year, and say, hey, where we've put money over in this area, and applied it to students, we've seen this percent of increase. You know, whether that's in attendance, behavioral issues, or student, student outcomes. I mean, you detach that data to some of the flyers we're sending out to parents, or the emails, I mean, that's a lot easier of an ask, you know, to get people to vote for, for funding increases and additional levies and referendums. So, yeah, I mean, we might not need to get down to the granular level, but it'd be good that we, it'd be good for us to know that they are looking at the granular level, and saying, hey, this is what we're doing, you know. So, yeah, I mean, again, improve our teaching and learning practices. So, we as the board, you know, checking in, are we achieving this goal? Well, what are you doing to improve your teaching and learning practices? You know, how is that working? And how can you tell if it's working, if you're not tracking the data at the classroom level? So, yeah, again, do I need to go look at how my son's first grade class is doing? No, but I hope somebody is, so.
Yeah, and that brings everything full circle back to the, the data discussion we were having about 20 minutes ago or so, and, and looking at developing baselines with metrics. Otherwise, I don't know how we do KPIs, and, and measure success, and know that we're moving forward. And, and, you know, and it's the same thing with, I know we've talked about the amount of money that's been spent on curriculum, which I think Bill has quoted in the millions of dollars. And, you know, what does, what kind of return on investment are we getting from that spending equalling academic achievement? You know, old curriculum versus new curriculum, new curriculum versus what we think we want to do strategically going forward with curriculum. And, you know, again, I, everything circles back to building metrics. Otherwise, I don't know how we measure.
You're up.
Did you just say my name? Sorry.
Go ahead, Amber.
Yeah, I think, for me, and Brett, yeah, I echo what people have said. I appreciate, like, seeing your thoughts on, on a framework. I think for me, and maybe this goes along with Carly and Brian's comments about needing to develop some board goals on how we want to tackle projects like this. I am in full support of a metrics plan. I feel like I, early, when we, when we first were joining the board, I, I sent a framework idea as well, not particular to 194, but a pretty, pretty specific metrics framework that would send benchmark goals with numbers. And so for me, I would recommend, it seems like we need a, we need a facilitator to come assist us in, as a district, in developing a metrics framework that aligns with our strategic plan. So what are, what are the board goals? What are the goals that the board has for the superintendent? And then how does the superintendent then work with his staff and, and system to, to achieve those goals? I, I appreciate, like, the lagging and leading indicators, and Brett, I agree with you, I, I think a lot of these things are happening. I feel like it's our job as a board to set, in collaboration with the superintendent, what, what we want the district to achieve. And then it's up to Superintendent Bowman, for you to deploy the necessary, you know, staffing and resources, and ask when you need more, of course, to accomplish those goals. But I, I don't feel like our, our board has the expertise to start developing what school, classroom, or even DO level indicators are. Like, I don't, we're not, we're not experts in what the research says about how, how do you improve an MCA score, right?
That's not, I just want to be clear, Amber. That's not what I was saying, though. Like, that, that's why there's like responsibilities and accountabilities there. That moves to them.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think anyone's saying that.
They have to bring it back up. Because I don't think, again, this was, and I apologize for going too much depth, but it literally was like, the concept to linkage, I don't know that I, I want anything to do with anything past sort of like our board goals, and like, what we expect out of the superintendent. So I'm like, I'm just saying, I agree with you a hundred percent, and I think our focus needs to stay up there. I just want to make sure that what we set, they can cascade it back up then. That's all I'm saying. But they have to figure those out.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I obviously agree with you. I think, for me, the struggle of, of our process, which has happened, was that we have put out for public consumption a, a framework, right, from one board member's perspective. Rather than, rather than assigning all board members a series of questions, and say, bring your ideas to the table, or to a work session, and we'll see where there's alignment, and see how we can fit these together. So for me, that, that signals that we need a facilitator to help kind of build this, but I, I think it'd be helpful to have it be with the superintendent. But I, I think it'd be helpful to have it be with the superintendent and the district office staff. And maybe even principal level to build like the district metrics framework. And then all, we all have our leans, right, and what we're trying to, trying to support and tackle. That's what I would suggest.
Amber, can I, can I ask you just a quick question off that?
Yep.
So how is that different than what we're doing right now? And we've got the superintendent here, we've got the teaching and learning director here. You know, as, as I noted to you, you know, we sent those comments out, you know, for reference. Because we were going to be discussing them, we shared them with the public, so they weren't, you know, blind to what we were reviewing and discussing. But how is that any different? You're, you're saying having a facilitator come in, I mean, aren't we doing that right now?
So I guess my question, like, at the end of this meeting, who, who is going to go work on this? I mean, I hope it's not just one board member that's gonna like. For me, it's like, and maybe it's because I, I work in higher ed and we do this all day long, but like, we need like posted notes around the room. And we're developing this as a team with district. So that at the end of a two hour session, we're pretty much on the same page. I felt like I've heard in today's meeting, and it's been interesting, like being, you know, virtual. From both sides, both at the table and at the podium, people are saying your goals or your ideas rather than our ideas. And and I know it's a little thing, but at the same times, it's signaling to me that. We're not working as a, as a district, as a, as a group together to move one ninety four forward. That there is this us, not like us and them mentality, but but kind of. And so. I, I don't know of another district that that operates like this in watching meetings. And so I'm just highlighting that. I think if we had a two or three hour facilitated session, we could come out of this with a pretty solid metrics. Framework for the district, but it cannot happen in isolation from, from district office or 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 us, of course. I just, I think this could happen more efficiently and be more productive, I guess, is at the heart of it. And more inclusive.
Yeah, when, when we do, based on my professional experience, when we do goal planning and stuff like that, you know, obviously, we've got the business leaders that. Come to the table with what they want to do, what the trends are, gather some input, input from some of their key leaders. But ultimately, it's the, you know, the, the senior leadership that decides like, here's what we're going to do, go after this. So I am in alignment where, you know, should there be a working session? We can definitely have that way. And maybe this is just a kickoff of that initial working session, we start sharing ideas and. And then kind of think through what are some of your priorities that you would want to focus on? So as an example for myself, for Brian Thompson, like, I'd love to have. An amazing, top tiered tier like reading program, like I know my, that my, I've had some experiences where, you know, the, the Orton Gilliam. Reading system that my kids have gone through have been super beneficial and helpful. And again, I'm not super well versed, but you know, I know that the reading act is helping us kind of move in that direction. But I would love to see that implemented across the board. But does that get too tactical or is that really the superintendent's decision to decide? And so if we want to set at, at a higher level for the board. It could be as simple as these six, so I'm right, I wrote this down, these six goals for the basic plan. We want the budget to be at an eight percent unassigned fund balance. We want academics, five percent increase in in each math, reading, science grade level proficiency. We want staff satisfaction survey pre at the end, at the end of the year at eighty percent. Student satisfaction survey, eighty percent. Innovation wise, I want everyone, all of our students to know how to do chat GPT prompting like that, that could be one. And then community, Laura's, Laura's Louis Leatherman, I think, is the guy who does the survey. We can say we want, we want to increase the community's perception of the school district by five percent. I mean, it could be as simple as that. And then we look to Superintendent Bowman to say, all right, what's your tactical plan to get there? But we, we don't need to boil the ocean. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry to interrupt, Brian. That, that is exactly, exactly the metrics framework that I shared when we first started on the board with, with the new board members. Like, I think that would be great. And so I think we just have very, there's just a lot going on without a focus, without focus. And I, I think we need some help to, I, I agree that we just keep talking and talking and talking. I've heard that from other board members, I agree. And I think we need someone to, either someone on board or someone to come in to help us develop that. And I think it's possible in a pretty turnaround.
And I would say part of this, if we are doing something like this to have the various district office people doing it with us. So that they could be like, five percent is not a reasonable goal or have it be informed by.
But how would they know? I mean, let me, I'm sorry. But we, we, we need, right, I understand, having them here, they could say, hey, that is, like, that's an outlier. You're not going to get five percent. Totally makes sense.
So it, it feels like if we, again, had some sort of retreat or work session where it is kind of table discussion. And like Amber's talking about, I can see whiteboard discussion. Those things that are more collaborative so that it feels like everybody's working together and that our goals are informed by. Expertise in the district.
So then can we just make a motion to? Take this to a work session and establish board goals and throw some whiteboards up and grab some sticky notes and start putting down what we want to go after on the. Whenever we decide to go do this? Is that what we would do then next?
I would say that one question is, do we feel like we, like Amber's mentioning? And I've, I think when we've had. Retreats or work sessions where someone from MSBA has come or something like that where they can help facilitate, it's super useful. But obviously, that's an expense to the district as well. So part of it is making sure like we can get to, like, is it actually worth it if we're super effective during that time? Because someone's facilitating it versus we don't get it done and then it drags on and on. So I could see the value of pulling someone in who just kind of helps organize us too. Go ahead, Amber, sorry.
Carly, to add to that, I feel like, and, and correct me, Superintendent Bowman, if I'm not understanding things correctly. But for me, it's like the, the strategic plan is missing like the tactic part or the, the metric part. Like we have these kind of, you know, broad goals and values, which are are great. So I'm going through strategic planning as a, I'm an out myself as a unit at the university and I'm working with the university's strategic planner now. So I'm like very in strategic plan mode. And the things that we're talking about tonight are things that strategic plans that I'm working on are integrating into it. And so for me, we're missing kind of that level. And I'm, I'm wondering if it was developed and just not on, on that slide? Or is that like the, the, the missing link here that we need to flesh out?
Well, I don't think it's the missing link in my way of thinking. The board establishes its goals, strategic level first. Going to chain of success, superintendent, who I am your employee, has goals that are derived and nested in that. And then we develop the key performance indicators that would support that. Again, as Brett has identified in a chain of success slash nested manner. That's the sequence. We're not in that sequence yet. The strategic plan I have to use, that's what I walked into the district with, without the other pieces. I'm working as hard as I can to get those. And I think this is one of the best discussions we've had around that. And I, I am diligently trying to extract the implied requirements and give my staff guidance around that. The strategic plan is what's informing that for me, absent the other pieces.
Is it typically the case that when you're doing the strategic plan that was done, you would have metrics associated with? So like, I'm just thinking about the A and I plan where there's super specific goals of like, we're going to increase. You know, staff of color by this percentage, we're going to do this kind of stuff. And so it would make sense, as we're all talking about, that we would have what I think district informed or kind of. I don't know, expertise informed kind of guidance around what metrics would be reasonable to support the goals. And then to have that tracked throughout a year period of how we're, how we're moving forward. Or what we're going to do for not.
Yes. All that's true. I think if the board had goals that were. Based on a strategic plan, that would be the point of departure for the rest of the cascading that that needs to occur. We're just a little out of sequence for, for real reasons. I mean, I didn't show up till October first, you weren't on the board till January. So there's, there's all those things that are, I think. Interdicting, if you will, the sequence of. That chain of success definition process. But it doesn't mean we can't. Still align ourselves. This conversation is part of that process. So it's super welcome by me. And again, in the absence of guidance, I'm going to try to filter out what we need to do and and drive toward that. Hard to do. In compartmentalized information. Better, easier to do if it's collective, but hey, this is what, this is the way the cards are falling and I'm doing what I can with that. But that, I think it's a sequential process that that emanates from a strategic plan.
Does the new school year, like, given some of what we've been talking about tonight with like the data metrics and getting that information by the fall, hopefully? Like, does some of this, should we be aiming for really establishing goals to start implementation? Like the planning over the summer to implement changes come fall, does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, I, I think both, I think everybody's articulated the kind of that is what we want to get to sequentially. Strategic plan, board goals, superintendent goals, superintendent to senior staff, senior staff to mid level staff. And superintendent to principals, evaluation devices, et cetera, all should embed that in a chain of success. Nested process. So that, I am actually working on that, it's just I'm a little scattered about how to get to that point. I could accelerate that effort with. A collective. Sequential. Articulation of that. But in the absence of that, I ain't stopping, I'll just keep driving.
And Carly, no, no, go ahead, Brett.
Nope, you're ready.
Carly, I agree with you. If, if we don't have, as a board, if we don't have this teed up so that Michael's got what he needs September. We, we will miss at least a half a year, maybe an entire year. And shame on us.
Then he needs, like, we have to be moving in a direction where that planning can happen over the summer so that, yeah.
I think that's kind of the timeline that would make some sense here because we're wrapping up the current school year. I mean, I know everybody's gonna, you know, we're starting to get lots of invites to all kinds of different events and everything else. So I mean, it's, there's a lot that's going to be happening here. If we could at least start to establish from our side, you know? Figure out when we can, you know, get together and work on this and give him some direction. He's going to still have to take it to his staff, his staff's then going to have to pull in, again, principals and team leads and, you know? You know, all the, all the different teaching and learning aspects that that tie into it. And they're going to have to then figure out, okay, if this is what the board expects out of him. This is what he expects out of us. Now, what do we need out of you guys to get this casting, you know, cascading back up? I mean, that, that's going to take some time and I don't, I don't want to rush everybody to try to say, oh, do it, you know, do it in two weeks. Cause you know, end of the year is going to be a, there's plenty going on.
We don't want to rush it, but let's be super candid, like, this stuff should have been done last fall. Strategic planning should have been done in Q four, which would have fed into. Staffing and prioritization and resource requests into Q one, which would then would have, which would have then. Fed into the budget approval for Q two. And then any prep material planning in preparation for the school year in September. And so I get the desire of talking through this. But if you actually want something done by September, this is something you have to expedite. Like, we have to have working sessions, you got to hammer this out. And then if we are going to review the strategic plan, keep in mind, you don't have to do this every year. Like the, it could be, it could have been just a review in Q four. But you guys were new and and we were new and it's one of those where. There wasn't this cadence in place where we always review the strategic plan in Q four, which feeds into the budget in Q one, which feeds into the staffing in Q two and stuff of that nature. So that's how sequentially we should have been doing this or or one would have thought how one, you know, how it could have been done. But we are where we are now. So the question is, if we're, if, if we need the strategic plan to feed, to, to be the baseline to determine the next fall's school district goals. So we need to allocate time on the strategic plan. And then the question is, is it going to be a lengthy review? Is it going to be a one day review? Is it going to be a two day review? Is, are we going to do massive changes, minor changes? As a school board, you were all elected by the community to make these decisions. And so knowing that the strategic plan is something that can be. Edited at any time, we can make a quick review session on it. Get it done and then tee up maybe next year to say, all right, how do we want to expand on it and and get more feedback? But if, or are we okay with what we, what, what it is today? And and then agree that that's, we're good with that and then we move on to the next level down. But that's like, that's the reality. And so if you want things ready by September, we need to have this soon.
And I was, again, I mean, going back to what you said earlier, it doesn't need to be that complex on the board goal side. I mean, I think it is just a matter of, okay, what is the metric we're going to track? And what do we want to see the improvement and over what time period? You know, the problem is, and we don't know what that metric is, right? Because MCA is not it, right? That, that, if we're looking at student improvement or improving student outcomes, the MCA results is not the metric. I mean, we've been told that unless we're not trusting.
Definitely at the high school, but I do think there's, there might be value looking at MCA still at the, at the elementary level. Cause a lot of them still don't opt out at the same level as the other. Sorry, Amber, you're, jump in.
But so, so what is, I mean, so that's the question, right? What, what is the, what is a fair improvement request, you know, of the district? What are we going to base it on? And I like under superintendent smart goals for Brett's thing, you know, growth measures, looking at, you know, student growth percentile. How much are you improving year over year? You know, are we hitting that? But again, we don't have the data to know, okay, where are they at right now? And so that's the question where we need the, the district office to backfill, provide us with, here's where we're at right now. Here's reliable data on student scores right now so we can set those goals, leading from those. I don't think a year is probably not enough, you know, we probably have to have like a three year goal. To provide some runway, but whatever it is, right?
I think you need year over year.
Well, you track it year over year, yeah, and you track progress. And so then the district can come in and they can say, well, this is all the things we're doing to improve. Or this is the setback, because for instance, we have new curriculum going in elementary school. So that could cause an issue, right? So maybe we're going to have an issue with a year or two where that's coming in. Who knows, maybe it's going to jump right away, but.
Yeah, Amber's got her hand up.
Yeah, I just want to, Brian, well, to both Brian and Matt. My, my thought, and this is, can obviously be up for a conversation, but in my opinion, the strategic plan is. Broad enough that really anything can fit under it, which maybe means it's not a super strong strategic plan. But for our purposes, it can function fine. And that, and that, Brian, I would argue that it's not just that this should have been done, you know, last quarter, but that. It's been years probably, or even maybe since the time late those schools started. In setting these metric goals. And so I, my priority would be to set the frameworks. And Matt, to your point, I think it's probably more than one metric, it's probably a many. I mean, not to get overwhelmed, but I, I think there can be, you know, a, a number of metrics in which we're, we're benchmarking ourselves against and trying to improve. And I, I think it can happen by the end of the summer. I think. Again, I think having like some sort of facilitated workshop. This could get done real quick. In terms of, in terms of writing it, I realize the work is not quick, but yes.
And I don't know if you would agree with this, Amber, I mean, I think a lot of it will come from the district office and relying upon them saying, hey, this is what we are tracking. This is what they're looking at in Edge of Climber at the classroom lever, level and the, the site level. the, the site level. And then we can use those, you know, build our, you know, bigger goals based on that understanding. So, yeah, I guess, I guess my question to you, I mean, do we need a facilitator or do we just need more direction from the district office as to what, where we're currently at with metrics and what they're currently reviewing? Or what they would propose reanalyze moving forward?
Matt, I mean, we, we can just, like I was just talking, at the next meeting, we can just maybe have Director Holmgren just come to the table and say, here are the top five goals at the school district level that we think, I think you should monitor. Fund balance, blank balance, the health of X, Y, Z, and we have something to react to. And then for academics, here are the top, let them come in and say, here are the five things that we think you should measure that you can test now in September and then retest in July and to see if there's improvement. And then same with whoever, you know, whoever leads the staff department. It's like, here's how we can measure, here are the top five things that I would measure. We would do a pre-survey of all the staff in September, asking them whatever survey questions that they have, and then re-ask them again in September or in, in July. I mean, we don't have to come up with these. We can have them just come to the table, give us your buffet list of metrics that you would want, and then we get to pick and choose, like I like this and I don't like that. And if there isn't something there that we like, then ask them to come back and try again or, or provide a different option.
Yeah. So that is the outstanding ask on teaching and learning, right? Because we're not the experts. So the outstanding ask has been, what should we, what should we use? You know, for a reliable metric? And that's fair.
We can do that next week.
Well.
I mean, they, they should, they ought to.
So, and again.
Can I just comment on that? So, so, yes, but not if you want dynamic data access and reporting because we're.
Correct. And I don't think that the dynamic piece, because we're working through that, but we should have a point in time in September, here's where we're at, in June, here's where we're at. It doesn't have to be rocket science either, guys.
To, to Amber's point, I mean, looking over at, again, the strategic plan, again, I don't know that I necessarily want to try to revamp that in the next couple of months. I mean, I think trying to do anything there, I mean, let's just say it's a five-year plan started in 2022 because 2022 is on there.
And we can tee that up for Q4 this year. It doesn't have to be, we don't have to do that now. If we were going to.
That's my point.
Yeah.
So again, and again, you can look at a couple of these things, you know, students first, that kind of stuff, you know, like we have goals stated on our website. We have some things that should drive, you know, what we want to work on for goals from our level, you know, down. And then they can, they can work it from there.
I mean, they're, they're all good things. I mean, my question is, we get lost in the, in the fluff, you know, and, and things that we can't measure, right? We can't track, you know? So that's where the KPIs come into place and needing to get on the same page. And that is a conversation between us and the district office. I think they provide them to us and then we refine them, right? And say, okay, does that mean what we're looking for? Yes or no, or do we want more?
And if there's something that they don't, they don't, they can't build right now, they can manually do that in, in September. And then they've got all year to operationalize it and then it's available in June. I mean, so just because it's not automated today, doesn't mean the data's not available. So.
Right. But I would just ask, I mean, we'll drive to dynamic data, but if we're showing you static data, you know, take, take it with the, kind of where we're at scenario as opposed to, there's an acronym, but I won't use it in public. Because that, that's part of the, the dance we're going through.
It's a snapshot in time though. So you have to remember that this was at, taken at this point, you know, any growth from there obviously wouldn't be included. I mean, that, that's got to be a given. So, you know, we can put some, some norms, some givens, some, you know, general understanding points around this too, as we then, you know, hand it off to the, to Superintendent Baumann and the, and the district staff to then say, build out, hey, we understand that some of this may not be, you know, something that's dynamic today, but they're setting it all up. Like, we should be able to get that in the future. So like, let's, let's have a forward look to it, but if we have some data point today, let's use it. Like, I mean, I, I think if we have something, let's, let's go off of that and say, okay, this may not be complete, but at least it gives us, you know, maybe a, a partial picture of what we're looking for in the end.
I, I mean, I like pulling in our district staff to make recommendations just because that feels more collaborative, where they, they're the starting point and we can help further refine. And then us also thinking about what are more of our individual board goals.
I think somebody said something to me that maybe we should, you know, if we're going to do a work session or something like that, we, we sort of put out a note and say, okay, district staff, you bring your, your top five thoughts for what the board should be looking at. And then, you know, we, we all think about it in that context as well. Like, if you were to think about five things from our vantage point, what would we want to see? And then we bring it all to the table, throw it on the board, and we figure out how it all meshes together and where's there overlap? And where's it, you know, we probably going to come up with a couple of the same things and just say, okay, well, good, we all agree there, we're done. Like, now move on to the next one.
Well, and it might help. I mean, it might help to have a couple principals involved or.
I'm open to whatever you guys think. Whoever we need to sort of help frame it up from a district staff level, I'm, I'm great. You know, so from, whatever input you think we need, let's, let's go for it.
So I am just quickly looking, again, I'm just looking at Haseens as an example. They've got one, two, three, four, five, six categories. They've got engaged learners, staff engagement, family engagement, operational efficiency, and community engagement. And so those are the core buckets. Sounds very basic to me, but it's.
No academic.
Yeah. And so part of, it's part of engaged learners, yeah. So part of that, what we are tracking, they're tracking student achievement, achievement gap, PSEO enrollment, student attendance, school perception survey, mental health, and student participation in activities and athletics. And so those are kind of the subcategories. And then they've got how we measure those things. They've got then individual, more granular, granular level metrics. And so it might be helpful for us as we have another meeting to talk through what other districts are doing and how they monitor their, their, their operational metrics that might lead into their annual strategic plan or goals.
Can I just say one thing about, I mean, I know we talk about comparables and who else we do things with and whatnot.
Yep.
But it's, it's kind of like one of those things when, when they start talking about like, you know, like the MSBA treasurer stuff and they're like, oh, well, this is what you should really be paying attention to and this is what other districts do. And I'm like, yeah, but they're going through a $7 million cut. We are not.
Yeah.
And I want to never be in that situation.
Yep.
Like, there's some things that I get looking at comparables.
Yep.
And then there's certain things that maybe we just don't want to be like everybody else. So I just, I want to, like, let's, I just want to keep that somewhat out there a little bit that.
And I'm aligned with that, but this would be a good, I mean, something to react to. Again, here, staff engagement, they've got two subcategories, school, school perception, survey staff, and then highly trained certified staff. So in their school perception survey staff, they've got five, four key questions that they ask each employee. I feel safe at school. I feel supported by my supervisor administrator when I make decisions. I feel comfortable sharing my input and concerns with my supervisor. And most days I look forward to going to work. Now, I'm not saying we need to go with those four, but there, the, the question is that are we aligned with, does a school perception survey for our staff, a, a method to capture staff satisfaction, you know? And then once we, and if you get a score in, in September and then you get a score in June, you'll see they were excited in, in, in the beginning and they were excited at the end, right? But, but, so again, we got to align on our key categories, I think. And then from those key categories, ask the administration, hey, what would you recommend? How would we want to track that? What would, and then we have to just agree, do we like that or do we not? We don't need to overcomplicate this. And then like to Director Superintendent Baumann to say, all right, how tactically, how are you going to go do this? So.
Seems like we need.
Well, Brian, going, I mean, I, I think what Brett, you suggested, like, I think you said, DO staff bring five KPIs and we bring our five. And when you start to map this out, that will naturally, in my, in my experience, create the categories, right? So I don't think you start with categories because I think that can limit creativity, but by grouping, you will create those ultimately.
Seems like we're all in line for a retreat or work session or something. A really effective one.
Let's table this for now, for future discussion. I appreciate all the comments. Amber, I appreciate you hopping in from Puerto Rico. You're not done though. Actually, I think we do have a board report coming out of Amber, if she's willing. Let me see if I can find, let me see if I can find my agenda to hop back on.
It's on my screen.
Yes, we are on the board report. If, if you're willing.
I'm happy to get my report. You want me to get my report?
That'd be great.
Okay. And Superintendent Baumann and Emily, if you're still in the room or whoever else, jump in here. So I attended the gifted and talented, or sorry, that's what it's called somewhere else, the GAC Gifted Advisory Council, which is a, a group of staff, teachers, parents, and students. I think it was last, last week. And in that meeting, they, they talked about two different changes to the advanced learning program in Lakeville. One, I think some of us on the board have been asked a number of questions of, it's just a, jump in here if I'm not getting things correct, but one of the changes will be at the middle school level with full implementation happening, I believe it's in three years from now, with kind of phased implementation happening before that. And the idea is to, for the most part, not offer specific honors courses at the middle school levels any longer, but instead integrate honors opportunities within, within all, with, within courses so that all students have the opportunity to pursue advanced learning opportunities within a classroom. Right now, I think it's on the, on one of the slides, that about 30% of our middle school students are participating in, in the honors classes. And then when you go to high school, between 50 and 60% are taking some sort of advanced learning. And so the idea is how can we increase middle school advanced learning opportunities for students? And this aligns with kind of best practices and, and research-based evidence on, on how to, you know, help, help students push themselves and to, to experience these advanced learning opportunities. I think there's still going to be a dedicated math advanced learning course. And Superintendent Baumann, am I capturing it correctly or are there things to add or correct from what I said?
Well, I'm going to ask Dr. McDonald to come up, to talk about that. I would, I, I think because of the, there's a lot more to this than I think a board report's going to cover down on. And maybe it's a, an opportunity that I guess I can ask for to present to the board if, if there's that level of interest in this particular matter. But I'll ask Dr. McDonald to fill in any gaps with regard to that.
Yeah, I apologize, Director Cameron. What was your specific question?
Oh, just like, did I capture the overall change or is there things to add or correct?
Yes, that is correct. So we are looking to move to a more embedded honors opportunity, which essentially would provide more opportunity for honors level curriculum engagement at the middle school. And to your point, it does not change, we have students who are accelerated in math, that remains. So if you are essentially a grade level advanced or a course level advanced in math, that's not going away. So it's really about how can we capitalize on the experiences and be able to offer more opportunities for all of our students at the middle level to hopefully then, what we would expect to see is that we would see an increase in the number of students engaging in those opportunities at the high school. So yes, I think you articulated that really well. And.
Great, thank you.
So there's only one, so there would be only one math program. So if you're in sixth grade, you're doing sixth grade math with everybody else, unless you happen to test out and you can do seventh grade math, so then you end up in the seventh grade class and doing math with those folks. All right. So there's, I'm just playing this out. So if there's four, wait, there's 500 kids in each grade level roughly, and so all of them are going to take the same math class. I'm, I'm just trying to think logistically, if there's 30 kids in the classroom, how does a teacher decide which kid gets the honors curriculum? Or does it, does a teacher teach the honors curriculum to everybody? And then for some students who may not be at, at that level yet, do they fall behind? I mean, I'm trying to, if you're not breaking them up, which is fine, how are you teaching it in one classroom?
Yeah, so it's classroom differentiation. And so the secondary teaching and learning team has a very detailed and robust plan about how to work with teachers over the next year or so to be able to develop that out so that teachers have the resources, the instructional strategies, et cetera, to be able to differentiate within the classroom. So students would, let's just say, this, the simplest way, and I, I'm a little reluctant, but the simplest way that I could describe it would be like if you were, say, engaging in a unit in English language arts, and maybe it was around, let's just say metaphor, for example, you would be providing different resources to different students depending on where they are in the developmental and learning process. So you might have a, a text that is, you know, at a ninth or 10th grade level, and you might have a text that's at an eighth grade level. And that's a very sort of simple way to describe it. And to Superintendent Baumann's point, if, if we want to talk more specific and in detail, I would certainly like to have Robbie Peters and Elata Kane come and talk more in-depth about what that looks like and what the plan is for that over time.
Can I just add one thing? And Amber actually mentioned this to me earlier. This isn't something new. Like, our school isn't breaking ground and doing this. Other schools are already doing this, correct?
Yes. We were a little bit of an outlier in how we were operating at our middle level. I think the bottom line for us is we want to be able to, sometimes we become limited by our system. So like, for example, we have this many slots for honors because of staffing, because of resources, because of whatever. And if you, you might not get in, even though you really need an opportunity for an advanced learning. We also have students that maybe had never had an honors experience before, so they don't know, or advanced learning experience, so they don't know that, what they're capable of. So we're really trying to broaden the scope. It does, to do it right, it requires time, planning, resources, et cetera, and that is all embedded in their transition plan over the next couple of years to be able to do it right, which is why you don't just change it overnight. You want to make sure the teachers are set up and confident and, and have what they need to be able to do it effectively.
Yeah. Perfect. I, I think that's, that's my biggest concern is the, the staffing model change. I mean, not the staffing of a number of resources, but the teacher, like if they're comfortable teaching this and now they've got to now teach another accelerated version for 15 kids and maybe halfway through the year now, 20 of those kids are in the accelerated or honors program, 10 kids are doing the standard math program. It's, it is, yeah, I, I think I'd like to just learn more and make sure that the staff feel that they have the skillset to be able to, and, and make that transition. But I do agree, from a student's lens, you're giving kids the opportunity within the same classroom to be able to jump to that next level throughout the course of the year if they're ready for that. But again, making sure that we've got the resources to be able to, to deliver that.
And I would just say, Director Thompson, I 100% agree with what you just said. Teachers cannot be expected to do this on the fly. It has to be a very planful and supportive approach to be able to, to make this work. So that's part of the plan.
And we're not losing any additional staff because I'm assuming that the honors math teachers will end up teaching math and honors within that program.
Yeah, we have the same number of students, same number of staff. It's just what that structure looks like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McDonald. And Brian, just to add to that, there was information shared at the GAC meeting. They surveyed the teachers about this idea, this plan, and high, high 90 percentile was excited about this. So there's more detail about that, I'm sure, but they did share that. that, I'm sure, but they did share that. Then, just other thing really quickly, at the elementary level, currently, we have the Discover program, which is a language, Language Arts Humanities curriculum, starting, I think, next year with fifth grade, they're going to, the district's going to start implementing Discover Math opportunity as well, and then, and then slowly bring in fourth and third grade levels as well, just like Discover Language Arts. So, that's the other change. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thanks, Amber. Anyone else?
One last one. Hey, in, in middle school, do we, do they have, like, if you took an honors math, do you get an extra credit in that, in middle school? Okay. It's, so, if you get a B, you get a B. Okay.
Any of the board reports? Was it last, was State of the City last week hosted by the chamber? I think, two weeks ago? Okay.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Time flies. The city's growing, is the news, still. I think number one through the first quarter of new building permits in the state, so, yeah. So, area adjustments coming soon to the board.
Roger.
All right, Superintendent Report?
Just one thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our interviews for Highview Elementary, Part One, will get rolling tomorrow. Seven candidates, I think it's seven, might be eight, seven. We'll, we'll be going through Part One. And just to share the composition of the Level One interview team, we have support staff from Highview, we have teachers from Highview, we have parents from Highview, and then I have a couple of elementary principals who are seasoned principals in our school system. And I will also have our Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, and myself. I will be leading that process. Phase Two will look to get three or four finalists, and hopefully, we can make an offer and have an announcement end of the month, beginning of May. So, super excited. I did talk to the staff. We did survey the staff. I've been going through that. To, the intent there was obviously to get some clear feedback, and look for thematic issues, to make sure that we're focused on while we're going through this interview process. So, I just want to share that with the community at large. So, excited about that. Thank you. That ends my report.
All right. With that, we have no recommended actions for the night, and so, I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Nicholson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're done.